All right, thank you. I will welcome us to our second Select Board Budget Workshop, March 9. Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes.
This is what's working, and the other thing isn't working. If one of the Select Board members could just call my personal phone and put it on speaker, just so I could hear everything they're saying, that might be a way around this.
Will that work?
Yep.
Okay, we'll do that. I'm gonna put you on mute on here, just so you can see.
I'm gonna...
We'll have the mic with you on speakerphone over there.
John, I'm gonna call you. It's Denise.
Sorry, anyone who's on livestream, we're having some technical difficulties with our hybrid environment, so we will... Just a moment, and we will... Okay, John Strand, we have you. Do you hear us?
Yeah, I do, sure.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, welcome to the Select Board Budget Workshop. So, we made some good progress on Monday night. John, I don't know where we decided we were gonna start, if we're gonna keep going through the 10 that we have left, or if you want to give us the overview. I know you and Megan have been working this week to look at all the expenditures.
Right. Yeah, so, I mean, I think that the main... We were at a point where, and hopefully, John, you can hear me, I'll do my best to speak up. Sorry for people on livestream. We're making this happen. So, what... We went through, I would say, a healthy portion of the budget Monday night. We have probably 10 departments left for you to go through your review. But before we get back into, you know, line item by line item, weed by weed, I wanted to just maybe take a second to pull back from the frame a little bit and kind of reset the stage from some things we talked about and add them back in, and also to talk about really impacts of where we are right now. And maybe some potential ideas in terms of big picture, where we can go that would allow you to, you know, exit tonight without having to go into 1, 2, 3, 4 in the morning. Not that I'm saying that's potential, I'm just saying, you know, just try to look at, you know, where we're at.
I appreciate that.
So, yeah, right. Okay, so, next, so basically, where we are right now, as of the changes that we made on Monday night, we're at 9.16%, okay? That's an overall increase. That's the impact. The taxpayer, the tax commitment is 9.1%. 1.9.16% higher than last year, okay?
And that is compared to the 30% that was reported in the budget document we got.
I'm gonna just talk about overall.
Okay.
So, rather than, because you're right, we can be, you know, 9.30 and 9, and this is the impact to taxpayers effectively is 9.16% as of where we left Monday night.
Okay.
So, how do we get from there to something else, you know, is really, you know, the question, I guess, at play in my mind as I walked out of here and as I was going through my days here over the next couple, couple days. So, one thing I want to talk about, Denise kind of brought this up about the question about the infrastructure bond and where that left us and where we are, where we aren't. So, Zoom isn't doing us a very good job there because it's cutting out part of the slide, but effectively, we had the infrastructure bond, $1.6 million or so, a lot of projects on that list, and, you know, really good intentions to try to jumpstart where we are, right? So, the original cost estimate for Old Rockland Road is $175,000. The final project cost was $425,000. Now, we were, we went over $250,000, and that is, we had it engineered, we had it put out to bid, we had the same contractor do the paving on that project that handled previous paving jobs in the town. I mean, this was a, all things being equal, situation, and we were overestimated by $250,000. And I think you can point that finger at the fact that the project got more expensive, the deeper they got into the road, the deeper they got into the project, and as a result, the best of intentions, no doubt, you know, about 10% of that bond going to Old Rockland Road, but that we were not able to do the next few projects because we were over budget on that one project. So, the main, the Russell Ave sidewalk, the Main Street sidewalk, the Harbor paving, the Town Office parking lot paving, paving on Park Street, those items fell out of what we had, what we as a town had thought we were going to accomplish in the infrastructure bond. Because, at least, you know, for this one project, for example, our costs just ballooned over, well, beyond estimate, but also because that road was far worse off than it had been, in large part because of the same conditions that caused us to do the infrastructure bond to begin with, which was, we had deferred maintenance, and deferred maintenance cost us money in the end. So, you know, we were talking about what to do and how do we get there, and the paving plan in its entirety. This is, this is one example of, we want to avoid that situation, because that situation goes from us budgeting well and thinking we're trying to accomplish the right thing, and then even in a project that we bid out, that we have engineering, that, you know, we've, it's really kind of all arms-length away, and it really ate us up. It ate up our budget. So, that's what I, that's what I, that's, you know, that's just one thing as we were talking about it. The next thing we talked about is fuel. And so, Megan and I sat down and put together some estimates on both heating fuel, propane, diesel, all of our fuels.
Can you scroll it up a little bit?
I think it's a PowerPoint.
Oh, never mind.
So, to give you... So, basically, in many cases, we doubled the cost per gallon for those fuels. The total of all that, and again, we can send this out so you can look at this a little bit more in depth, but effectively, let's see, the first one, the first one's heating fuel, I believe, at $4.50 a gallon. The second one is, what's that? Oh, yeah. I'm doing this. The second one is diesel, $4.00 a gallon. Again, these are estimates, so, you know. And then last, propane, $4.00 a gallon. Totalling all three of these categories up, we were around $50,000 that we needed to add to the budget if we're going to account for these higher fuel costs. Now...
Which we really, I think, need to, and I don't think this is gonna be short-term, but...
The point you guys made the other night is absolutely crystal clear, and Monday, you know, when we were looking at this in January, higher, sure. War in Ukraine, higher, not really in January, but definitely now in March. So, we put that together, and that number, as I said, that number is around $50,000 that we would need to add back into the budget. So, we're at 9.16. We add $50,000 to it. That's not, I don't think anyone's happy with 9.16 as a number. And that was really kind of, as we were talking about, what do we need to add for you to talk about tonight? Piece is really the question that you have to answer tonight, which is, what is the acceptable rate of increase? You know, to me, 9.16 is a high number and one that's hard to swallow for any number of different reasons. How do you get to a lower number? What is that number? What is the number that is defensible for you at town meeting to stand up and say, "Look, I know that we have people hurting, we have people who can't afford, we have people who are facing a whole bunch of issues." What's the number that keeps core services in place, talks about building for a future in Rockport that doesn't, you know, defer maintenance and create higher costs for us tomorrow, just to be able to get us through this town meeting? And lastly, really putting ourselves in a place where future increases are modest, not jumps. You know, it's one thing if we go 5%, 5%, 5%, it's another if you go, you know, 7.9 or 8% and then 2. And that's, that's the question earlier, is what, what's the future increase that you're, it's, you're talking about this year, but you don't want to set yourself up for next year as well to be in this same boat again.
Well, that's why we're in this boat, for some of it, right?
Right. So, right, it's been deferred, it's been kicked to you, you know, it's been, "Well, we'll deal this a future day, a future day." This is the future day, unfortunately. So...
I mean, one of the things that I had talked about earlier with Michelle is that, you know, after we get done tonight, I was gonna look at you and say, "Okay, we've had our stab at it. What is it that you can live without this year that we haven't touched?" So, and that may come back, I'll give you a little hour or two to think about it, because it will come back.
Well...
I think they've done, I think you've done some of that, so...
I did some of that. Because, because I think, because you're right, like, it's very difficult to sit up on this, up there on the dais and be like, "Okay, well, this is, this makes sense here," but does it make sense when you get back to the office, right? And that's always the hard thing to do. As a Select Board member, the rate is the number that you feel the number that, that's what, what can I, what can I do with that number? And, you know, for me, it was, we were in a different time, values were rising through the roof, and we could, we could do just about whatever we want, and we'd still have 2%, you know? We've, we didn't have deferred maintenance. We had a new town office built in at that point. Everything was A-OK. You don't have that luxury, unfortunately. I wish you did. I wish we all did. But here we are. So, at 9.15 or 9.16, what's the number? And so, what I, what I said was, "Okay, where can we go?" So, 9, 7, 9 is...
So, John, but I just need to interrupt you, because I'm, then I'm confused about the 30% increase that's showing on the budget summary page. How is that different?
All the way at the bottom of that page.
Right.
So, that's the overall impact.
Okay, so the 12.48% is what we're going up, but that's because, because we're lumping in the school and the county, and so we're sort of getting the benefit of that, right?
And we're at...
Not often. Not often does it happen.
But if they're only going up 6% and they're the bulk of...
They're the bulk of it.
And we're at 9.1 now without using the 312, right?
Right, right, and that's where I'm...
And I don't really want to use that until after we've exhausted all of our other options.
So, well, I'll get to the next slide, but, so as proposed, I mean, looking at that sheet, Denise, the proposed budget was 12.48 overall. So, we're already down more than 3% from there, okay? So, what, what I looked at is, we're at 9.15, we've gone through all but 10 departments, and we've talked about some things, but to me, that, you know, moving forward, where do we, where do we go from here? So, the next number I thought is, is the one to look at is 7.9. 7.9 is the rate of inflation. It's what...
Well, that's December of 2021, right?
December of 2021, over the prior year. So, the question is, 7.9 won't be the year of inflation in June when we vote on this. It's going to be far higher Saturday, right? So, we're gonna be dealing, so, just taking that kind of moment of where we are, and then accounting for the fuel costs, which is kind of that $50,000 number, the hope is, is that by the time we would get to June, 7.9 overall, but we're accounting for those fuel increases, that would throw our arms around 12 months of where we think we can operate without, you know, running the risk of being over budget in various departments. Like, that's, that's throwing our arms around everything, okay? So, what does that include, right? Now, again, as Mark said, what could we live without? What would I recommend? I don't mean to relitigate the discussion we had on roads, but I want to say that I think we can get to 7.9 by funding roads. And I think that that's, you do that, but the give back is the issue of the UFB. And how do you use the UFB to offset that paving cost? Because your paving costs will increase higher than your UFB, so you, that's kind of the offset. Rather than spend it and put it in the roads for a future cost that will be higher. So, we can get to 7.9 by having an increase of paying back to 7.88, use of 2.75 from UFB, and then taking the cemetery investments and use $40,000. And so, the idea that would be to use that, to use that over the next two years, $40,000 this year, $40,000 next year, to offset these increased mowing costs. We have the investments, this is the time to offset this bump that we're facing from mowing, and hopefully, we have a better result, a better solution for us, you know, by the time we're coming to that, into that contract. So, there's pros and cons to this. The pro is it mirrors the inflation rate of December of '21, right? So, this past December, we meet the fuel increases issue that we talked about, it meets the 10-year road paving plan, and it meets other operational needs. So, we're allowed, we're able to kind of stay with all the other priorities that department heads have already presented and talked about, as well as myself. We don't have to cut into the, some of the core pieces that have put together this budget. Con, if we use UFB, we're already behind 2.75, $2.75,000 next year. And that's part of why that increase is so wonky on this page, because the, you guys, the town used over $300,000 last year, and that does, that's not included in this budget. So, by not staying with that same level of revenue, it creates a huge gap in the budget. So, what I'm trying to do is use a little bit less than what you used last year, but also try to get to the point where you're paving, you're trying to meet your paving needs, so you can somewhat do both. It's still a short-term situation, because as we talked about upstairs, we need a policy. We need a new policy that really reflects something. But, but also understand, we're not gonna get there this year, we're not gonna get there next year. It's more of an aspirational goal at this point, but it's, that may be something we would shoot to in years to come.
So, so let me ask you a question about the paving.
Yeah.
We know that $425,000, when the prices are low, is a stretch.
Yeah.
You know, we were told that would be, you know, the most that they likely could accomplish.
Yeah.
And we know some of that was because things didn't get done last year for one reason or another. So, just say you had 7.88 that was approved.
Yeah.
And you might encumber some.
Right.
And then you'll budget another 700 next year.
Right.
And now you've got a million dollars worth of paving, you can't do 425. How are you going to accomplish?
I don't believe we can accomplish 425.
Well, see, this is where I'm going.
Yeah.
I don't mind giving you the money if I thought we could spend it in a year.
Yeah.
But all we're doing is encumbering it and then flipping it into next year when we're...
Yeah.
...for the same amount of money.
I, yeah, and I don't know, I think part of the problem that what you heard is not accurate. I don't think it's accurate you're gonna get $425,000 done, and I think that's probably part of the issue that we've had, is you've been given a lot of bad information.
Well, I mean, when I saw the first $8,000 for professional services, like I said the other night, I thought you were gonna hire maybe, you know, the Steve Beverages of the world, who could pave, and then you have two people that could watch it instead of one, and you could get more done.
We could absolutely bring in a Steve Beverage if, and I'm sure if called by the town of Rockport, he would be glad to do the job once again. I don't think it will be difficult for us to, to well exceed what we did this year. I think the question, you know, it's, it's the prep work, right? It's the, it's the, doing all the ditching, doing the culvert replacements, you know, those are the jobs that our full-time staff is really tasked with. And trying to pull off, last summer, we threw a mowing contract on top of that for them to complete. We were short-staffed everywhere, and they didn't, they didn't, they didn't, I don't think anyone was happy. I don't think Public Works was happy with the job that they were left with. I don't think the citizens were happy. We now fully, we have fully, fully a staffed group. I've got some things in here that I think will help to take some of those things off their plate. So, Public Works is dealing with roads, not dealing with, you know, the window that's stuck up in the roof of the, at the clerk's office and having to get three guys over to help us fix that. That's, you know...
Or moving things at the new library. I mean, I, I was in there when Mike came in and said, "Listen, I can't, I can't be everything to everybody."
Yeah, and that's, and I think that's been a, look, we have a high standard of service in this town. We got a lot of people who expect our community to look good. I'm one of them. I mean, I expect our town to look, this, you know, these prettiest little village, you know, that's nice for Down East Magazine and all that, and it's great for the internet. But I also think we want pride in where we are, right? I mean, when I see that, the bag of trash or the mattress on the side of the road, those are things we just need to be able to take care of. And I don't want to pull someone off of a job site where we're digging up Grove Street, let's say, to deal with those things, because that is a distraction. But we need to be able to do both. That's, I guess, that's a lot of this budget, is that the answer isn't, we can't do it. The answer is, how do we figure out how to do it? So, I'm hoping we can get more efficient by using a work order system. I know we can use the paving, you know, this sort of paving plan to get us ahead, but the middle of that is, we also have to be, we have to give them the tools. And maybe I have a difference of agreement with, you know, with our Public Works Director in terms of what that is, but we met with him, we discussed this, we talked about this number, 7.88, and that's, that's the number. And if, the number changes based upon what fuel prices do, or whatever that might be, that's based upon $100 a ton. But we need a, we need a Public Works Department that can handle one year out of a 10-year plan every year. That's how it has to be built. And if we have to reconfigure and reorient or, or set up new goals, that's what we have to do, because that's, unless we're gonna give back roads, you know, or get the state to take back those roads they gave us all those years ago, unfortunately, that's the nut we have to crack as a town. It's, it's not enjoyable, it's, and the 10-year, you know, defer maintenance line is, puts us in a bad spot to have to come up with it here. But unfortunately, that's, that's our responsibility, you know, and that's the thing that keeps me up at night, is that future cost that we defer, you know, we don't want another Old Rockland Road. We thought we just went in for paving, and all of a sudden, the cost doubles, and instead of getting seven miles of road paved that year, it's two, because there was so much more work to be accomplished there. We actually had to box cut. We had to, you know, we had to grind down the asphalt, go back to gravel, like we're probably gonna have to do on Park Street. Like, these are, losing that Park Street, there's, there's another one right there. So, that was supposed to be part of the bond. We've all seen where Park Street is right now. If it was part of the bond and paved two years ago, maybe we don't have those pothole issues that have now propped up from the town line to Simon's Corner. So, now, what we're gonna be looking at is that hill is probably gonna be have to be ground down and repaved with a binder coat, and then repaved again with a trowel coat.
Yeah, it needs better drainage. It has to be...
The hill is awful.
Yeah, because you get that water right by the school there, and then it's supposed to drop down and drain, and it kind of runs under the road and freezes, and that's why you get all those holes.
Yeah, and you got, I mean, you know as well as anybody, Eric, and you too, Michelle, that water that came across, you know, this, out of that Halloween storm, you can't tell me that there wasn't some component of all that water that had further impacts in making that worse than what we thought, you know? So, it's just, that's the one that eats me up, is that number. And it's, I don't mean to go back to it, and I appreciate you guys hearing me out again on it. I just, it scares me. Just, it scares me, and I don't want to put ourselves in a bad spot.
No, I'm happy supporting the roads at full value.
Yeah. How much of a component is drainage in the length of life? Because that is something our Public Works guys can do.
They should be doing that, yes.
It's, it's so huge that you use the Y and you say it's huge. It's, I mean, it's everything, right? If there's water on a road, and then...
So, even if we don't have money to pave, we could be keeping it out on...
Because that definitely needs to be reditched there in front of the school, because it's all overgrown, which covers the drain hole. So, it doesn't drop down and drop into the stream, it goes across the road.
And I think that's kind of the challenge too, right? And when we talk about maintenance and we talk about, I mean, it's a lot of money, but I think as townspeople, we need to see that, that that's being done, right? We're not just putting pavement down for a storm to come through and have to pave again, right? That we are, we're getting to the root of the problem, where we're using our heavy equipment operators that we have, we're using the staff that we have at Public Works, not only in the winter, where they do a fantastic job plowing, but we're using them all year and getting that, those services and those skills to use, because it's important, and it's only gonna keep costing us more if we don't do it.
Right.
But it doesn't make any sense for us to pave a road without doing all of the other preventive things for it, so...
The road I have, the ride, the road I drive to work on every day, it's an old subdivision road. It's got the biggest hump in the middle of it, and I've been hesitant to bring it up to anybody, because nobody wants to have the town manager's road be the best of the town. But it's like, every time I drive over that, I'm like, "Gosh, we gotta get this thing fixed."
Probably, it's probably an old bulldozer.
Yeah.
There's a car under there, you know, you see the...
All right, so let's, let's look at this next slide that I'm intrigued by, the new values at 7.9.
I'll try to move through this a little bit quickly, but, so, the, the current average single-family home value, okay? So, that's right now, before we've done any sort of adjustments, all right? Is $328,816, okay? That's the average single-family home.
So, we lost our screen sharing. I don't know if that's...
Yeah, Bruce, could you, could you switch to the Zoom for me? No problem.
Can you tell me that number again, 328?
328, 816. Okay, so the current taxes, so that's the current mill rate, all right? On that average, single-family home is $5,606.31, okay? So, the estimate for the new average, this is after we've done the adjustment, is $404,202. Now, it's an average, and just everyone out there in TV land, this, everyone, the, no, not everyone goes up at the same rate. So, some will go up, some will go down, some will stay the same. So, don't, you know, don't try to do the math and say, "Well, my move value will be X." That's not how this works. But just to get you started, okay? So, the estimated taxes on this new average with 7.9, okay, would be $6,341.93. So, the total estimated increase at that 7.9 is $7.35.62. So, and Denise, you, I think you brought this up, like, so where does that, you know, at the school and all that, how does that? So, the $7.35 of that is attributable, $470 is the school, $44.14 is county, and the municipal's $220.68, okay? If you were to, and I have a couple more slides here, we talked about 7.6, 7.3.
So, that's about, I'm trying to do the math really fast, on a $400,000 house, a $220 increase, if we just focus on the municipal budget, which is all we have control of.
That's all we've got, yeah.
It's about $18 a month.
I would love for them to give me control of the school budget, but, you know...
I'd like to have everybody write their own check to them.
Yes, yes.
Unfortunately, we're the one that collects the taxes.
It's, I'm, yeah.
So, it's about eight, that is, that proposal's about an $18 a month, on, just on the municipal side, right?
Yeah, and if you were to, yeah, so there's, and that's, that's just the, you know, it's just a snapshot of where the average is, and of course, you know, we know we're, we have multimillion-dollar homes, and we have, you know, some who are in mobile homes who, you know, have a far lower value. But it doesn't account for homestead exemptions and all those other things that these programs, veterans exemptions, the program, the deferral program that Kerry talked about, but just to give you the ballpark.
All right, so it's about $61.25 a month on average.
But it's $528.49 when you take it all together a month.
Oh, if you broke up the...
No, if you took your 6,300 and you divided it by 12, it's got 528, you have to set aside.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to make hours look so good, because people don't look at just hours.
No.
Oh, right, no, 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 completely, right.
They pay the whole deal, absolutely, yeah. No, if you try to go into the town office and just pay your municipal share. Um, you know, Shane Wyatt will probably look at your funds, so that's it's the it's the whole, it's the whole.
But like Denise said, we have no control over that school accounting number.
We could stay up as late as we wanted tonight.
Right, that's that's the, and that's the difficult part and honestly, I think that's what a lot of residents don't realize. And I'll say for a long time I didn't realize. I mean, I know it says it on our tax bill.
Yeah.
But I think we don't have control over those and that's the challenging part and those will continue to increase and. We can go to the budget meetings. I think there's one happening tonight where they're reviewing it. So we can go to those and and you can, you know, as residents push back on that, but at the end of the day. When that budget's approved, that budget's approved and we just get the bill for it and I think that same with county. And we don't, and I think it's it's hard because we don't have control over that, so. You know, we're trying to nickel and dime here and do the best we can.
And and as we're, not to spend a lot of time on schools, but as we learned when we had the school board members in, there's a lot of pressure on them to keep. More spending more money essentially. People who don't want.
Right.
So if people are so inclined, they they do need to go to those meetings.
Absolutely, I mean, yeah.
And I I like good schools. I'm not proud of our schools.
I think it's important for people to know, especially people who don't have children in the school system, our our elderly folks, it's. They're contributing and it's 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 difficult because we don't control that.
We have a lot of second homes, a lot of people who don't live here year round. They're paying all of that and their kids, my kids are benefiting, thank you. Um, you know, I appreciate it, very appreciate that, but that's. That's where we are.
Alright, so let's look at our next.
Yeah, so just real quickly, I wanna just talk about, I gave so six points, seven point six and there's seven point three and then there's some others. So basically, it's the same scenario we talked about under under seven point three. The addition, uh, some points, seven point nine, I'm sorry.
Yep.
The the only, so a couple changes here would to get to seven six. We'd add another fifty thousand from UFB, so a total of three hundred twenty-five thousand, which is a little bit closer to what we did this past year.
What was that? I I thought it was three eighty that we did for.
Yeah, that's what I mean, what I'm saying, yeah, we're not quite there, but trying to whittle it back. Uh, so, but I would, we could reduce the Harbor Park attendance to forty hours for twelve weeks. Effectively rather than rather than two people, it would be one person. Um, just to try to find a way to trim that back, increase our planning permit fees to sixty-five thousand. Basically, the changes, we were talking about the adjustment for what Orion was making for um, an increase of thirty-three percent. So trying to build that into um, that would get us to seven, seven six, so. Again, just to look at the mill rate, I won't go through all the numbers, but the bottom line number here would be seven eleven thirty-seven.
And what's the red line?
The re- literally the red line, two thirteen forty-one.
Seven dollars?
Seven dollars, yep. Okay, next up, seven three, again, we talked about the fire adjustments. Where Megan's finger is gonna wear out. We would increase the use of cemetery reserve to fifty-five thousand. We would reduce public works part-time labor to ten thousand dollars, which is a cut of fourteen thousand seven thirty. Uh, we would increase the use of float reserve to six thousand dollars. Um, oh. So just the, just a few, you know, kind of uh, items there and then um. It's a six ninety-nine twenty-four increase, municipal two oh two seventy-eight, okay? So that just one page to show you everything, again, the difference of seven nine, the municipal number is two twenty sixty-eight. Seven six, two thirteen forty-one, seven three, two oh two seventy-eight.
Those seven ones?
There's only so many slides, we just couldn't.
How far do you wanna go with it?
I didn't wanna take too much time tonight, you know, it was kinda what it was, but um.
No.
So that just gives you a sense of kinda the ballpark that, you know, you could go deeper and and there's and there's some other things, you know, you could look at, but. But if you were in the sevens, that, you know, you're really in the realm of talking about. Um, without making some some big changes, you know, kind of two twenty to two oh two. Um, and and you can see, I mean, that's a range of six tenths of a percent. Um, which covers about eighteen real dollars in terms of what. We're asking the voters and the taxpayers to to float, so just. It kinda, you know, like you said, you start with thirty percent, you're like, oh my goodness gracious, how do we do it? But, okay, let's. Let's get real. We talked about some real world stuff on Monday night. Let's bring that in and and can we, you know, get there.
I, you know, I'm, maybe I'm. Missing something here, but shouldn't your school and county numbers remain the same across the page?
No, cuz the overall budget is changing, so as that changes, their proportions get bigger.
But theirs doesn't, ours does.
So as ours gets smaller, their proportional share of that overall budget becomes larger.
Alright.
It's those percentages like Doug used to have, right? We just gotta keep those percentages kind of hidden on this page, but that's what they're doing. To the overall number.
Does John get any questions?
Yeah.
John Strand. Not sure if you can hear us, but he's.
Uh, yeah, hi, it's um, John, thank you very much for doing this breakdown and showing us just. The benefits of just a few more dollars or a few or the disadvantages of a few less dollars. This is very helpful. Thank you.
And and I'll say, this is clue truly a team effort. That idea is coming from me and and Megan fixing them, so. Thank you.
So the questions then are, what exactly is in the cemetery reserve account? How much is in that?
So there's like four hundred thousand that could be used.
Okay.
So it it's a temporary fix. It's not something that's probably sustainable for a long term. My guess is, is that with inflation the way that it is. It's very likely we could be headed towards another recession and then it's questionable what's gonna happen with the stock market. So it's certainly not something that's sustainable, but I think it's something that we could do this year.
Yeah, I didn't just.
Well, right, and and because that mowing, I mean, for the cemetery, I mean, that has to be maintained, that's.
And the mowing more than doubled. I mean, it was almost forty thousand.
So I think that makes sense to use that and, you know, it's not like we have fifty thousand and we're saying use it all. I mean. But I think that it would make sense.
And I still think we should look at alternative ground cover. I still think that's, cuz the mowing contracts aren't gonna get any better, so we need to reduce. The amount that we mow. I I don't care how you look at it, we have to reduce it.
Yeah, have you, have you, have you run across, I know, you and I've talked about about, you know, you look things up, so have you found somebody who's like?
Well, I I did some search on some.
I figured.
Of some private cemeteries and some some towns and they've either gone, some of them have gone to artificial turf.
Okay.
Just because it doesn't look as great, obviously, but in the short term it does, but you don't have to do anything to it. Other ones have swapped over to to. They've just let them overgrow with wildflowers.
Yeah.
So and if people want to have their stones cleaned, they can pay to have them cleaned, but otherwise. The the gardens, they let them grow as a wild garden and, you know, just like in, like Helen was saying, in England, if they're wild gardens, I'm from Milesboro. Nobody mowed our our graveyards. They're all, they're all tree filled and moss. Nobody mowed them except I think there's like two over there that might get mowed.
And talking to Linda, there are some requirements that are passed down to to us in terms of the cemeteries, like in terms of like veterans plots.
Those have to be maintained.
So it's not like um, but we would just have to keep that in mind, that there is gonna be some expense still there with those stones.
Oh, you, even if you let it overgrow with wildflowers, you're not gonna zero out the expense. My idea is, well, gas is gonna keep going up. We're contributing to CO2 emissions by mowing. And we're talking about environment and it you just can't, it's not sustainable. Just like you say, the investment account isn't sustainable. Mowing isn't sustainable. It needs to be eliminated.
Yeah.
You know, or reduced to a the absolute bare minimum and if it's hedge rows and gardens and boxwood. That just gets trimmed a couple of times throughout the year, then that's what it needs to be.
Or call and bury them.
Well, I've been talking to some garden club members who are very passionate about native plants and and I think there's sort of an interesting idea of maybe coming up with a test plot idea.
Right, it doesn't have to be all done at once. It could be.
Clovers.
This area can be done here and see how it and let it grow on its own and then. Pick another plot the next year and reduce the square footage being mowed per year.
You know, an interesting place to try, try something new and Mark's brought this up quite a bit is. It uh, you know, over in Rockville, um, that that's an area where we have a mound that has been meaning to be pushed over for.
How many years?
A while.
Yeah.
It's it's the tallest mountain in Rockville. No, not really.
And we and we could sell the wood off that lot.
At this point, right.
You know, there may be something where we're kinda resetting the boundaries there, maybe something interesting.
It could be as you expand and as you say, this, you know, whatever, when that gets done and you sell lots there and you start to say. This is what the maintenance of this looks like.
Those could be optional lots offered to people that appreciate what.
Right. You know, that it's a no, it's a no maintenance. You don't pay for perpetual care. It's a.
Seaview has a definite, you know, Seaview is Seaview, Amesbury Bill is Amesbury Health, you know, but there's.
Right, and the and the portion of Rockville today is, you know, as people expect it, but as you. Expand, which we're going to need to do at some point, then you have.
We need to look at alternatives.
Yeah, I agree.
We can't keep pushing that number.
But the cemetery reserve is is good for a year like this, it seems, where we got hit with a price we couldn't have anticipated.
Absolutely, yeah.
What, Megan, without going through the book, I appreciate um, you telling me and you've told me before, I'm sure. What was the amount that we at, when all the bills were paid, we put back into UFB at the end of the year last year?
Uh, three, just over three hundred.
That we put back in.
So we took three eighty out and put back three hundred.
So, yeah, so I mean, even if we if we took the original three twelve out, we're still only going twelve behind. Even though we took three eighty.
And a big portion of that had to do with uh. Department has been instructed not to spend money, one. Two, we are very uncertain about where our revenues were gonna land.
Sure.
So because of that, we really stuck to that, don't spend money and. In most cases, we exceeded our revenues where we expected them, unlike, except for like the Opera House, the Harbor. Places that depended on like tourism type traffic, uh, we exceeded our revenues otherwise. So that combined with department has been instructed not to spend money, I think really impacted.
So it wasn't an unusually high year for amount returned to the.
But but there wasn't anything that they really needed to perform the job that didn't get. I mean, they still did what they needed to do on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, I think the, I think what it's, I wasn't here, I don't, but but it seemed to me that. There was a lot of change in what they're, what they were asked to day-to-day because of, you know, for example, we weren't doing anything here. The harbor was a different space la- you know, two summers ago and things like that.
They had people working from home, so expenses in the office space wasn't like it was. The library was closed for a period of time.
Yeah.
So those expenses were down.
Right.
So and and this is just me because I like to throw stuff out there and see what controversy I can come up with. You know, I and I I did had a conversation with Michelle earlier and I was. We basically gave you an open blank piece of paper.
Yep.
And said, come back and tell us what needs to be done.
Yep.
And I appreciate that because it. It has stuff that hasn't been done for for more than the past two administrations. It's not just. The past two, it's it because everybody wants something shiny and new and we forget about the old stuff. Um, I'm, I was of a mind originally to to try to stick with the six hundred thousand. In paving that I had originally recommended. But I'm more in line to go up to seven hundred, but I also am in line to suggest taking. Six hundred thousand out of UFB. Because this is a uh, stuff needs to get done and if we don't do it, it's gonna get kicked down. I know that's gonna. Dip into what we have in there now. But it's not like we're piddling it away. It's going towards stuff that needs to be done that hasn't been done. And that's also, you know, it does knock it back from seven eighty-eight down to seven hundred, but. You know, I'm still.
Could you explain how we got to seven eighty-eight and what the trade-offs would be if we went down to six hundred? And what we're giving up by moving down to seven eighty-eight?
Or seven hundred?
Um, okay, uh, let me see if I got this right and if I didn't, John, just speak up. So you. How did, how did we get to seven eighty-eight and what was the second part of your question?
Yeah, what are the trade-offs of going down to seven eighty-eight from your perspective and what are the benefits of moving up there from six hundred thousand?
Okay, I think I understand. If I if I leave something out, let me know, but so s- seven hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. Is the amount of money, so we back up. Seven million eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars roughly is the amount of money it would take with. A a a regular rate of increase over the course of ten years to pave every road in the town of Rockport. So the way you come about the ten-year plan is effectively by cutting that amount in ten. And and saying, this is the bare minimum you need to start each year to fund so that you can get to a place where you've. You have addressed all town roads in the in a ten-year plan. Saying that, we know that some roads are seven-year roads, some roads are twelve-year roads, some roads are fifteen-year roads, some are five-year roads. We have a situation where Park Street was dealt with a number of years ago. This is not this most recent where we're supposed to do this part of this infrastructure plan, but where parts of that were deferred. It did not meet that ten-year plan, so I can't remember if you, this, I think this was the, you were you were absent this meeting, John, but we had. Um, we were talking about, um, I lost my train of thought on that one. The, anyway, the longs, the long and the short of it is that by that number is is a a benchmark. Of saying where we need to go. The problem is that because we've only paved twenty-three miles of road. Uh, excuse, twenty-three percent of the road, of the seventy-eight miles of road in the last ten years, twelve years. We have deferred everything else. So we have, like, we're sitting on a number of roads that should have been done three, four, five years ago, six years ago. But were never done and so they're deteriorating, deteriorating, deteriorating. So as a result, we're not really talking about seven hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars to meet our current need. That's merely to meet the need of a ten-year plan. If we go purely on the basis of need. And that's what we've asked the our our public works director to grade all of these roads. We would need to spend five million dollars over the next three years. There's no way we can afford that.
No.
No way. But the reason why I keep going back to seven eighty-eight, not that we're gonna spend that exact amount of money every year. But the reason why I go back to that number and using it as a reserve, it's it's a benchmark from which. We can then at least begin to meet our our expectation as, you know, the people looking after the the towns, the towns roads. So without that, you know, falling short of that number. We're not even meeting the baseline, never mind current condition, never mind deferred maintenance to the degree we've done over the last decade. So it's, it it's a, it's a highly compromised number. I I'll admit that. It's not, you know, if we were going purely on the basis of this is what it takes to get us there, none of us. We'd all be laughed out of town, you know, um, so that's the only defensible number I feel like I can put before you right now. To talk about, um, but at some point, if we can get our budget to a place where we have a benchmark number like seven eighty-eight. And we can, you know, go up from there or talk about from there or deal with from there, then. At least we've started with setting that that benchmark part of the budget and we don't have to talk about going up a tremendous amount to get there. We've met that that standard, um, and then the second part of this, this is part of this situation we talked about is creating a reserve for that number. So not to spend the money when it doesn't make sense, so. Uh, the other night, using that as a reserve, if we have high, high gas prices, which then means high, high fuel prices, which means high, high asphalt prices. It may not make be wise for the town to spend that money in August of twenty twenty-two, but it might be really wise to spend that money in May of twenty-three. Or potentially a whole bunch of work in July of twenty-three, so it it gives. So it, it gives the town greater flexibility of when to use that money. Further, if it's a reserve, it has to come back before the board for approval. So there would have to be somewhat of a, a, a paving plan that the board would have to sign off on as part of using money from reserves.
Megan, what, oh, sorry, John, did that answer your question?
No, that, that makes a lot of sense and, uh, thank you for that, John.
Yep, thank you.
So Megan, what, I mean, you probably have told us a million times, but what's the amount we have in the UFB?
Um.
Yeah, it's on page.
There is a page in here.
Fifty eight.
Okay.
The only problem, I mean, I get where Mark's coming from. The only problem with using that much out of the unassigned fund balance. Well, there's two problems. One is that when we start next year's budget, we are six hundred thousand dollars in the hole before we start anywhere. The second thing is, is that we are at a point right now, one, we have shelled out money for the October storm. Uh, that we yet have to recoup anything from FEMA for. Uh, we are at a point where depending on how much more of those expenses we need to take on. Uh, we might get to a point where we have to look at a tax anticipation note before we get reimbursement. So using that extent of money while it says that we have. Three million or whatever the number is.
We have a checkbook.
Right, exactly.
So let, let me ask you this, John.
Yep.
What are we anticipating getting back from FEMA?
Boy, that's the one point three million dollar question.
It's a significant amount.
We hope, yeah.
So what would happen if that came back in within this budget year? Is that something that could be used for those specific purposes?
Um, yes, it would be used, but it would be used for the specific purposes of the places damaged. So for example, Robinson Drive, um, you know, the box culvert up on Chris's Road. Um, the washout along Mount Pleasant, those, those isolated areas. We could apply that money towards those repairs. Uh, the challenge is right now, they've certified the amount of money they're willing to reimburse or. Certified the amount of repairs to a hundred seventy eight thousand dollars. So obviously well short of what we would need to even get halfway of, of fixing Robinson Drive. So we have a lot, a long fight to go with FEMA folks to get what really we should.
We shouldn't count on that at all is what you're saying.
I would not. I mean, I, I think to me, the biggest thing that. I would feel good about is the stream crossing grants that we got the other day. That's, that's real money and, um, you know, I would, I would say that if you're looking at that seven eighty eight, we talked about maybe not doing paving. But a good chunk of, if we were using that seven eighty eight with that stream crossing grant, that could cover. A, a, a fair chunk of that, um, if we were.
Another thing to consider too is that we haven't expensed those expenses. So they're not in this budget as a year to date expense. They've been legered, meaning that we are. Fingers crossed, hoping that we don't have to expense them and we'll get that revenue to offset them. So as it stands right now, those expenses are not showing in here.
So, um. Damn, I had, I had two things I was thinking about, one of which is mechanic street alone. Which isn't this year, but it's in the spring of twenty three, the.
Like next budget is what I would probably, yeah.
And if I recall correctly, the, the whole rebuilding, everything of that alone is three hundred plus thousand.
It probably, it probably could be, yeah. I mean, you're talking structure drainers, you're talking sidewalks, you know, the whole schmear.
So here again, I mean, we're, you know, we're, and I assume all of that would come out of the paving line.
Yeah.
Cause I don't think there's anything that specifically separates construction from paving.
Right.
So even next year, we're not gonna be able to get, we're not gonna be able to keep up.
Well, right, the, right, the problem is if you never get caught up, you're definitely never gonna get caught up.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, if you.
It's that thing, if you're always chasing the race and you just stop running, you definitely not.
So I mean, if, you know, if you're budgeting another seven eighty eight next year and you're spending three hundred there, you've only got four eighty eight for.
Everything.
Paving everywhere else.
Well, which is double what we've spent some years for road paving.
Yeah.
Those old budgets are crazy.
The one thing I would say, you know, going through this list, and I know it's like, it's far too.
It's in your budget on page two nineteen.
Yeah, go to, go to two nineteen, that's probably a better way to, to do this than try to look all the way across the room. But you'll see that, I mean, there is a, there's a number for every, every road, you know, so it's. There, that not only is it width and length of the road, but it's also, there, there have been. Accommodations made for other costs, culvert replacements, um. Yeah, I mean, all of the. Is it exhaustive? No. Is it, is it exact? Definitely not. This was really meant to. To really flesh out the fact that, you know, a number of these, Warrington Street, for example, good sized culvert on Warrington Street will need, you know, replacement. By the beach, um, that's a big number when we get to that, that, you know, that year, but that's included in this. Seven eighty eight number, you know, that we're looking at, so, um. We didn't go into this budget with the anticipation we'd get the stream crossing grant, hoping we would. But, uh, that's a, you know, that's a quarter million dollars that will get us that much closer to. You know, if, I mean, just to look at it this way, if we were to spend seven eighty eight this year. And you take that two hundred fifty thousand dollars on top of it, you've actually spent a little over a million dollars towards these needs. You know, that's a, that's a big, that'll be a big feather in the town's cap.
So my, my other thing that I just recalled was the hundred and seventy seven thousand. Uh, federal funds that we, we've already given half away, but we haven't talked about that offsetting anything in here yet, have we?
No, I, I, and I, I was hesitant to do so because, you know, there's, we gotta use it. Um, and trying to figure out the right approach.
Drastic times call for drastic measures.
Absolutely, and, and I think, you know, there's an argument that could be made that. Well, one of the communities that didn't use that to, to deal with personnel needs and those who are on the front lines. Um, you know, we could certainly take a look and see what options we might have to try to approach that. I've never liked the idea of, we're gonna give you a certain amount of money over a certain length of time and thanks for that. Because it, it, it doesn't, and then are you gonna take that money away when that's done? Is it?
It's a, it's, it's.
It's very tough.
That's never a good idea. I've been in those situations and it completely is just awful. Cause you get used to it and.
Then it's gone.
So, you know, and I'll go back to, to what we talked about the other night. It's not. A six percent when you factor in, you're going to ninety percent for your healthcare. So it's a higher percent where, where actually.
Total comp.
If you're looking at total comp, yeah, and, and I know Megan put together some numbers that, to look at total comp. Because that was something that we talked about. We didn't do a slide because again, I didn't want forty five slides, you know, before you get into the, the meat and potatoes here, but. You're right, that's, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna stall a little bit.
Well, can I ask you one question before? I know we'll come back to total comp, cause thank, I'm, I'm not surprised Megan put something together, but. Um, legal bills.
Yeah.
Where are those coming out of? I mean, we're, we're what, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in so far this year?
Only a hundred and forty seven thousand.
Hundred and forty seven thousand.
Total.
Is that just from the friends or is that everything else?
That's just from the friends.
Just the friends.
Just the friends. We do have, you know, we do have various legal lines. We talked about for, um, you know, planning codes, we have, you know, the police department.
But it must be tapping those out.
We're, yeah, I mean, like with police, we've already gone over that, um. You know, I, I try to be judicious of what I, I call, um, you know, Phil, but, you know. We have some litigious folks that have, you know, a lot of questions, so. Um, I, I did not, I tried to not budget. It's a hard thing to budget legal costs.
Absolutely.
Because one phone call and you're twenty five thousand dollars in the hole.
Right.
Uh, you originally, my original budget, I think, had fifty thousand dollars set aside and planning. I cut it back to twenty five, knowing that we're not gonna spend twenty five, not knowing we're gonna spend fifty, but it comes out of UFB.
Okay.
So that's another area where.
Right.
UFB is our.
Sure we have.
It's our balance, yeah.
Okay.
You have.
So the average, I looked at all full time employees. Uh, that have been here at least a year, so it gets them through their six month probationary period. Uh, I looked at union and non-union and combined them all together. So the average pay across the board, uh, is twenty five dollars and eighty one cents. With the six percent wage increase, the average of that is a dollar twenty. And it ranges from fifty two cents to three dollars.
Okay, average of one twenty per hour.
Average of one twenty per hour.
But you, and I, you, you can't really use the police department, for example, cause they're only, some of those are like one percent. In this year's budget because of the contract. So your six percent that you're looking at for the non-contractual people gets dragged down.
All union employees are receiving at least three percent because that's what's in their contract. But I had to use them in order to get the benefit analysis piece of it, so that it was straight across the board. So wages straight across the board are a dollar twenty an hour. If we look at, um. Current benefit costs, uh. With an accountment for what we predict, the cost will increase in January. To the ninety ten benefit averages sixty eight cents an hour.
Well, I guess, you know, when I'm looking at the page and, and I don't know how this come about, but. You know, your patrol sergeant looks like he's getting a one percent raise.
So if you'll remember, when they did this last contract, they had differential pay, which was a new, uh, thing for this. And the union contract wasn't signed until well after this budget was created. So not only did I have to estimate for hourly pay, I also had to estimate for what that differential pay would do. So that percentage doesn't reflect what the contract really had once it was signed. We had to base a lot of things off where we thought the contract was going. So that's why the percentage is different.
I mean, that contract was signed last. Last summer, wasn't it? No.
Before me, it was, it was, and Bill was still here then.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I mean, when you put this budget together, the numbers you come up with would have been, you would have come up with them in. December, January, whatever, and the contract would have already been in place.
Okay, so maybe it was just the differential pay. I do remember that I had to do special estimating for that. But if you look at the wage scale in the union contract, that position gets a three percent.
Okay, well, I mean, the four patrolmen that are listed here, on average, you have is a one point nine percent.
So again, I think it goes to that differential pay, having to estimate that.
Okay, I just, I was just thinking.
We had no history to base it on, where this time I had history to base it on.
I was just thinking, if that was the case, then your six percent that we're talking about for everybody else, that would have dragged it down, so it wouldn't have looked so bad.
Uh, you're saying that the previous budget was probably.
Right.
Higher than it should have been.
Exactly.
That's why it looks so low.
Okay.
Cause the previous year is too high.
So the sixty three, two seventy.
Okay, so the health insurance with the adjustments recommended equals sixty eight cents an hour on average. The.
So that's on top of the current benefits at sixty eight cents an hour.
Right, so the movement from where benef, where everybody lays with benefits now. Uh, including the cost increase that we estimate for January. Moving to a ninety ten coverage averages sixty eight cents per hour across the board.
So it's doubling the current benefit. Cause you said current benefits were sixty eight cents an hour.
No, so it, in order to find that difference, I had to look at what the current benefits are, so where employees fit. In those benefit brackets, cause we have three different ones.
Okay, so whatever that number is.
Mm-hmm, and then took the ninety ten benefit away from that to figure out what the difference was. And then I took that average to find an average per employee per hour.
And does that include the FSA?
It does not.
Okay.
Getting there.
There's that.
Uh, so the FSA, uh, cr- obviously it's the same for all employees, so it would be a dollar thirty two an hour. Which brings the average total to three dollars and twenty cents an hour. And that ranges anywhere from a dollar sixty to six oh three.
So our hi- hi- so what you're saying is our highest compensated employee is getting six dollars and three cents.
And the lowest compensated would be a dollar sixty.
A dollar sixty, okay. I appreciate that because I think it puts it into perspective. I mean, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
But it puts it in to perspective when you're talking, you know, with your, with your six percent increase, with your insurance, with your FSA. We're talking less than a loaf of bread an hour.
Right.
I mean, I mean, it's not, you know, you're not talking twenty five dollars an hour.
Dollars a week.
Right.
Might be a slice of bread by the time we get to August, I don't know.
But I think that's important too, right? Because it's very easy, as I said, it's the top line of every budget. When you look at salary and you say, oh, it's a six percent, that's too high, or you want, you've got great benefits. Oh, you wanna, you know, wanna do an FSA. It's very easy to, to quickly try to X those numbers out. But I think when you take a look at it and you do a comparison across, I mean, our environment, our community. We, I mean, we're paying people twenty dollars an hour that work at Dunkin' Donuts. We're paying people. I mean, and these are skilled jobs. We need skilled, good people.
And I don't know if I gave you this number, but the average pay per hour per employee is twenty five dollars and eighty one cents.
Yes, you did, yep. So that takes the lowest, the highest, that's your average, I mean, so.
I mean, and you have target hiring for twenty four dollars an hour and our average is not much more than that.
Well, and I mean, when you look at your averages though, you have. Two people that are making a hundred thousand, even though half, one person's getting reamed.
So I did not include Carrie in this.
Alright.
I, I took that out, um. Uh, I did include you.
So I'm, I'm the.
Uh, I think Carrie was the only one that I took out because we took that out of the budget.
Fifty thing, but so the rest of them, I mean, there's a twenty five thousand dollar jump between you and. Couple of your other department heads.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that, Megan.
Yeah, now that, that helps because people, you know.
What does it really mean?
Right, what does it mean?
Well, and, and I hope, I hope that, you know, it's explained through you two people that, you know. It, it's not just as easy as saying six because.
No.
It, it's, it's a larger number than just that six represents.
Megan, I do think that that would be helpful if you can, if you could put that on a slide for the budget committee. Only so that as they're looking at this next week, they have that same information.
So what, what I typically do is that after you guys finish going through the budget. I will type up your draft comments for the changes that you made. I'll send that out to you to approve or make changes to. Once that's done, uh, I post your budget online, so the budget committee can go there to find it. And then I write them a letter.
Okay.
Outlining your changes and I could just include that.
Yeah, I think you should. I think it would be helpful.
Okay.
Um, okay.
That's the wage cost though, we're, and as. As was mentioned on Monday, you still are, you still have the tax employer side costs on top of that.
FICA is seven percent. It's not gonna affect workers' comp. It's not gonna affect, uh. Uh, SUDA because it's already, you're already maxed out. So the only thing it really affects is FICA.
Yeah, I mean, the, the FICA.
Which is seven point, yeah, percent.
I know, I'm just, they brought it up, so.
No, no, that's good.
It's gonna be masked.
So if the, so the benefits are going up by two dollars an hour. I mean, the benefits constitute essentially two dollars an hour.
Right, sixty eight cents points a dollar thirty two.
Yeah, so that, does that make the benefits? And then it's only a dollar twenty for the six percent increase, but benefits are going up two dollars an hour, so. The benefits are like almost an eight percent increase on top of the six percent. Am I doing that math right?
And I guess that's the, the number I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
What, the total comp, right.
And you said that number. I think, I think you said eight the other night, yeah. And that was, that was the number oddly enough.
So is that a fourteen percent increase then in basically what it's costing us per employee?
Well, you can't combine them cause they're on different scales.
True, okay.
That was the thing though, in my letter that I, I mentioned is that, and, and that wasn't how we came about that number. Maybe that's just.
Right, cause the FSA is a flat amount. All the others are flat amounts.
But that was, I've, on the very rough number of the differential between. A town of Camden employee, a, average town of Camden employee, a town of Rockport employee, just on the basis of what they're paying for health insurance. That if they are paid the same in Rockport and in Camden, it's about an eight percent differential. So if I'm, I'm a widget maker for Camden or I'm a widget maker for Rockport. I'm paying, I, I'd say I have an eight percent decrease. In comparison, even if I'm paid the same because my benefit package is different. So, does it.
Trying to bring that up.
It's trying to get to.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuts all sorts of ways.
Levelish, yeah. Not level, but levelish.
Levelish, yeah, okay.
Right.
All right.
Sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
But the other question is, where was the, the health insurance going to ninety ten and it was at?
Uh, so we have three. Uh, so we have three different brackets, one is a hundred percent employee, ninety percent dependent. The next one is eighty-five employer, fifteen percent employee. And the next one is uh seventy-five twenty-five.
That's health, family and individual on all of those?
Mm-hmm.
And the other part about that is you, you're gonna lose probably three of those hundred percent people in the next
Oh, because those are
And those are the biggest expense.
Potential retirees.
Okay.
Yep.
So you said eighty-five fifteen? I think I missed something.
So the middle bracket's eighty-five fifteen, and then the bu- last bracket's seventy-five twenty-five.
And that, you're just expressing both, what the employee's share is and what the employer's.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah.
So eighty-five and seventy-five, and we don't differentiate between employee or family coverage?
No.
Which I know in my law firm was a, a big bone of contention, cause
Oh, really?
this, well, for the single people, they're like,
Yeah.
wait a minute.
Yeah.
I don't, I can't get that benefit, so it was just something that
And some places do offer like a opt-out payment, uh, which might be something that you consider, but it obviously is an added expense for offering that. But it does seem like a lot of places do offer an op-out, whether it's fifteen hundred dollars a year or a percentage of the benefit that they're not receiving.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it is an option, if that's something that
I, I, I mean, I, as one who, who, who does, you know, it was, who's used that option, it's, it's a hugely beneficial item for the town, and the bottom line of each department. The ability for you to say, to reallocate funds, well, you have to budget for that, but allows you for, you know, the employees made whole, they're happy, they have a little bit extra. The town is, is happier in the end, because they spend a little bit less on health insurance for the employee. It, it's a win-win.
Cause it's not usually opted out at a hundred percent.
Right, exactly, there's a lesser amount, so you were able to, you know, that's, we talked about kind of modernizing the personnel policy.
Right, and create incentives to
Yeah.
Right.
maybe not go with our health insurance, but with the spouses or something.
So currently, we have one employee that chooses to take no coverage, and we have one, two, uh, three employees that have single coverage, everybody else has family or employee and children.
Alright, looking at time, let's uh move on here. So, um, any other proposals that you have for us, the five percent, was that, you're gonna put that one up next? Did you see that look across, across his face?
Give Megan about ten minutes, she'll have that thing done for you guys, it'll be crazy.
Should we go through these last ten, just for any um questions? Um, so I think we're starting with sanitation.
Right, two twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
We'll let Eric answer all these questions, since he's on board.
No change.
Or isn't?
There's, well, I don't think that there is uh any opportunity really for changes there.
Well, there is, but we opted to hold it, so.
No, and I think it's a very well-run, I mean, I know there's, there's some other things going on, but
You were on the budget side of it, not me.
Oh, I was, it was fun. The one thing I would say, to keep an eye on it, and I, I don't know if you heard a lot of this, Eric, too, but the bag fee is, is
Yeah, it's, it's on the table.
Yeah.
It, yeah, it's, the bag fee possibility is on the table to increase, yeah.
Well, it's amazing how many people don't understand that that is, they, they think we're charging two dollars and fifty cents for a yellow plastic bag, not for the cost of running the transit station.
Yeah, it's, right.
Where do you buy your bags? They're so expensive.
Yeah, well, the
The holes didn't help it, to be honest, though.
No.
To be fair.
That was a bad batch, it's true.
Not great.
No, I mean, the idea here is to get this away from being a tax burden and being a self-sustained entity.
Yeah.
So
Sorry, John, I didn't realize I wasn't sharing it.
So, that would be the idea, you know, so.
Follow me along, it's okay.
So it'd be, be basically a, a user fee system, which makes the most sense, you know.
And our trucking costs have gone up, our, our, our tonnage has, has, you know, is continuing to increase. We, we are, there's a balance there with that, that we've, it's been about every five years, we've increased bag fees since this program started in oh-three, I think. Uh, right before I got on the Midcoast Solid Waste Board, and it's, you know, it's really meant to track, and, and, you know, the new contracts, and oh, by the way, trucking, can you imagine? Like, we're hauling this waste in Orange Walk right now, that's not around the corner, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make my pitch for food waste and using scrap dogs, because sixty percent of what is put in those yellow bags at the dump is food waste.
Yep.
And that could be recycled.
Absolutely.
Not with mine, it goes to my chickens.
No, I mean, that, that's the thing, there are way, and that's sixty percent of the waste of the
Except for what they can't eat, the chickens get everything, and there's almost no food waste in my bags.
Scrap chickens, you're, you're open, outside then.
Between clover and chickens, he's got it going on.
He's the guy.
Alright, uh, so Mark, any, any updates or changes, public works, sanitation?
Uh, library's next, two thirty-five.
Hold on, anyone have any?
Sorry.
Sorry, no, no, okay. Nope, go ahead, sorry, Megan.
Two thirty-five, library.
Alright, um. Uh, building repair and maintenance, can you remind me of what, we had fifteen hundred there, and I was just trying to remember. I didn't write it down, what we were expecting to have to bill repair already.
Safety fund.
Thirty-six oh six.
Was that the added amount, yeah.
Said this is a safety fund.
Was that the
This is a safety fund.
Just in case.
Fun just in case, I guess.
Well, what happened here is, there were two, there were two elevator maintenance contracts.
Yep.
One was more expensive, that included more items, one was less expensive, included less. What I said was, let's take the least expensive maintenance contract, but put more money into maintenance, building maintenance.
Just in case, okay.
So if something else breaks, but we don't need to use it for the elevator, it, twenty-five hundred was the number that would have covered both, so it, it kind of was meant to self-insure.
And everything else in gray, like the thirty thousand for the website, all that is covered by the endowment.
That's right, yep, thank goodness.
Yes, thank goodness.
It's a huge gift.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, that's the only question I think I had. Mark, Eric, Denise.
Okay, conservation, two forty-three.
I had a note here, let's see. No, I guess my note was no concerns, okay?
I know there was some question about Glen Cove and the water quality monitoring, would that increase costs if it's something that they took on?
No, um, but I, I met with Abby, she's the department head responsible for Conservation Commission. Um, and I've asked her, she's gonna go through, um, the, actually, I think, I mean, tomorrow, tonight, tonight, I think. So, uh, she was gonna go through the committee, um, policy that we adopted back, um, you know, this fall, and try to get them going with their, um, their work plan. And so my hope is that that, when that either comes back at that point, you know, before you, or perhaps before, that's what I would probably suggest that they add to their work plan, cause that's something is really in your, in your corner.
Yeah, I think it's going to be, I kind of have a feeling it might be, it's been brought up numerous times in various committees, so.
Yes, yes, I would love it.
I think it's probably a comprehensive plan committee, too, I think that was one of the items that was on there, too, I think. Might have been last time, but, I think they'd like to.
I mean, that, that's been talked about since, I mean, oh, when you were on the board.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, for fifteen, twenty years.
Yes.
And, you know, they sort of had an idea where it was coming from, but, yeah, Tom Ford was on top of that.
And I wonder, actually, with that new culvert, you know, if we do it for place that culvert in Warrington, I'd be interested to see if there's anything in that, that will go back to finding the sources of our, our pollution over there. It's, um, of course, we, you know, we did have the bathroom, the bathrooms had been there, the state owned it, so that there's a whole bunch, I mean, of course, there's the, the Mobile Home Park, there's Wal- what was Walmart, that, I mean, there's so many different things that coalesce and enter right there in Cove, but, um, I think that would be a great item to be on their, uh, their work plan, I'd love it.
I had a note wondering about if there's grants available for water quality monitoring.
It's a good question.
Looks like EPA would have.
I would, I think, when we can get them to come back, um, Bill, um, you know, Megan Dwyer and Bill Bow, they're really ahead of those things, and they're really sort of uh, taking on this commission with kind of two hands, each of them, and they're really, you know, energetic about it, I would
Which is great.
I think, I think we, that might be a, a way to, to look at this. A- a- and also, as we talked about, the climate resilience thing, that, that, that statement that we're hoping to have that back on your agenda, um, or your upcoming meeting. Um, there, you know, I think there's some, some exciting stuff that will be a little bit broader, and really kind of more within the way the statute has set up a conservation commission to kind of support a whole bunch of different pieces of town government. You know, there's your, your check, you know, hey, how can we do this better? How can we be more, uh, mindful of fish crossing? The whole reason we were able to be successful with those, um, crossings, uh, and, and culverts in, in West Rockport, Robinson Drive and West Street Extension, salmon. Atlantic salmon in West Rockport, go figure, that's why. So, thank your lucky salmon, we, that made it happen.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a big push to get the, the salmon there, traditional waterways reopened. And that's a lot of the push to remove a lot of dams, too, or rebuild them.
It's, it's great, I just, I never wanted to be, it'd be, you know, down the street.
If they're spawning up into the waterways, then yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, any more questions or concerns on conservation?
No, it's great to hear we have good people.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, Parks is next, two forty-nine.
The only question I had on here, and I know we had some conversation upstairs, was the four thousand for signs and small park benches.
Yep.
Did that, I'm, I don't even remember where we landed on that, I had highlighted that and
Wasn't one of them to buy a bench, or wasn't three thousand of that to buy a bench, and the other part was?
Well, that's down in park benches, I think.
We have two thousand, it's, it's the welcome signs that you put on there, and my recommendation is talk to the guy running the works, the wood workshop at the high school, and have his kids build them, cause they're all into recycled materials, that's what they use. He did that presentation for the Midcoast Solid Waste, he came in and did a great presentation, and his, the kids are real excited to build stuff. We should give them the opportunity to build it.
Well, they'll need funds to build it, but
No, they, they get all recycled materials, and it's part of their school program.
Yeah.
Nice.
So, I mean, even if we had to donate a thousand dollars, it's better than four. Does not, doesn't hurt to ask him.
Yeah, so this amount does not include any park benches, it's just signage.
The welcome sign near Glen Cove, which would be similar to a village sign, right? And then a Walker Park signage on Pascal, which I think there was, appeared to be a lot of opposition to that, about driving more traffic into
I did hear that.
Walker Park.
Yeah, there was, there was definitely opposition, um, in, in the budget meeting, um, you know, the initial request was, was a little bit larger, um, and I, and I pared that back to really those two areas of signage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that, just, maybe just to, before I get into that, the, so the benches on seventy-three forty-eight, that's, that's an expenditure with an offsetting revenue.
Right, buy one, pay
Right, so there's a, there's a, you know, there isn't a, a
Right.
We're good on terms of net.
Yeah, if it happens, it does, if it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, right, and, and they've taken, we talked about that at your last meeting, how there's a different approach, and really have the Parks Committee really decide where they want them to go, as opposed to the donor, and so forth. The, the, so even though it says sign small park benches, it's just signage in that line for a thousand dollars.
It's not the park, okay.
So there's no, there was a request for, um, some small, um, seating for Goodrich Park, but, um, I couldn't include this here, just too much, unfortunately.
And we're putting, so, question, the thirty-five hundred for the benches, uh, fifty-three forty.
The, the, the maintenance supplies there?
Yeah, the, replacing the remaining old tables at Harbor, Kramer, Walker, and, um, that will take care of all the ones that need to be replaced?
Yes, there was, there is, there's also some work that's gonna be done to harbor, um, uh, we have, the roofs need to be replaced on those two, so there's somewhat of a coming in from a couple of different angles to try to attack that problem. Um, there's existing money right now in the harbor budget to deal with some of that, and I'm hoping that will get done this spring before we dust off and spring clean, um, but this work here is, you know, I said, it's I, I looked at it as keeping good stuff, you know, repairing what we already have, you know?
So, my other one was the Walker Park Reserve deposit of twelve.
That's what I've been trying to find.
Um.
That's for playground equipment at Walker Park.
Yep, but how mu- and
Idea is it's like a sixty thousand dollar piece.
Yeah.
Has to be done, to be honest with you.
Those are page sixty, sixty-nine, that has the reserves on it? Yeah, I can't remember.
And, and just, I think you were at the meeting, Mark, but for anyone, probably Denise certainly, um, the plan is this spring for the merry-go-round, a new merry-go-round to be purchased with funds already in that reserve, so by the time we, I'm hoping, but Eric's winters has been amazing, working on this with the committee.
Yep.
Um, we're gonna be back to merry-go-round world and
Can we, for one, for one memory, could we put the old one in and just
You and me.
Let someone get hurt.
Uh, the Walker Park Reserve's on page sixty-four, in the middle of the page, there's twenty-six thousand in it. Minus whatever the merry-go-round is gonna be.
I mean, not that I, you know, wanna
It's the kids, Mark, it's the kids.
I mean, I'm not saying take it all away, but I, I had originally written down minus three thousand out of there, so you can still get nine. Yeah, but you said the merry-go-round is how much?
About twelve.
It's gonna be about twelve.
We've got twenty-six, what else are we gonna be?
I, I think the idea of that is to just keep building it, so that when we have to replace it.
And the idea, too, is to make it ADA accessible.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess where I'm going is, so that, you know, if we take twelve out of twenty-six, we've still got enough to buy another one if, if that one breaks next year.
Yeah.
But
But then we're not making any headway towards the playground equipment.
No.
New equipment. It's the kids, Mark, it's for the kids.
Yeah, it's the ADA is the issue.
The lower down, this end of the table. The ADA thing's always been the issue.
No, no, yeah.
It's always been.
Understood.
Going down those stairs, you feel like you're
Yeah, it's tough, it's
An escalator.
Thirty-six twenty-seven for the lime kiln maintenance, that ten thousand from last year, is that just gonna go away then? Back into un- unassigned fund balance?
No, there's a lime kiln reserve that we'll move it into, until
Okay.
The plan is figured out, it's what's happening.
Alright, any other questions, recommended changes? Did we land on any change for the four thousand? Keep?
I don't know, I think it's, I don't know, well, they don't want the pushback on the Walker was big, so.
I, I guess I'll make a pick, I mean, it is, it's an amazing group of people who will do the right thing, if there's if there's a way to get the high school to build those signs, they're not gonna go spend money that they don't need to.
I mean, these are people that are out doing our gardens and doing our, I mean, you know, they're out there, they're out there digging and trying to make it better and
Yeah, I wasn't, I'm not advocating to cut anything out of this, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think it's worth looking at alternatives and utilizing the skills.
Students have a stake in the town.
Yeah, I completely agree.
Yeah, if, if they have pride in building it, there's less app to be, beginning, it, it will last longer.
Right, damage, right.
It will.
Okay, then we will move on.
Opera House is page two fifty-five.
Well, I really appreciate all the work you're doing and sort of trying to sort this out and get, figure out what kind of a path to be on.
We're very excited where we're headed, if this is any indication
I know, that's already
For people that can't see it, the AV booth is amazing.
It's a nice improvement, it really is.
So, I hope that we're
Megan, because I think, um, I know this is work on top of the work that you're doing already and it's a lot of work. Um, but trying to get this house back in order, literally, because it is, it's a beautiful facility, it's been neglected for a while. Um, I think getting people to use it, I know we've kind of gone back and forth on fees and I think that was absolutely the right decision to make, if we're not, it, it doesn't matter what, if, what we charge, if we're not booking anything, it doesn't matter what the fee is, so you know, if we're, if we can bring it down and get some more events in here.
We're very excited about, uh, the summer concert series that Carrie's working on, I think that that is gonna take us in a great direction and we're working on building off that in the years to come, so in an effort not to take on too much and then fall flat on our face, our effort is to to start small and make that work and then build onto that the summers to come, we have some really exciting plans and I hope that I hope that we can make it work.
And, and this is all the thousands of people watching on TV right now.
Is there anyone on? Have we been checking live stream?
Yeah, we have five people.
Okay, great.
Uh, no, but this is definitely a, a time where
Are your re- revenues then are hopefully conservative?
I, I think so.
They are in the aspect that we have no idea what the pandemic is gonna do in terms of allowing us to have events here, I mean
That'll be a distant, distant memory by August.
Let's hope so.
We're paying seven dollars a gallon.
Continue through next winter, cause
We'll be home again.
Right, can't go anywhere anyway.
We'll stay at home.
So I'm just thinking, it might be, you know, it might be a break even, because there's a twenty-five thousand dollar more, so if we are, if we're conservative and we get more than
Yeah.
Right, and we can all get the word out among the friends and family.
Right, and our goal is to have like, uh, a Rockport event page where people coming into town can go to our page and see all the events that are happening.
Look at the pretty harbor, with the cameras?
Yeah, people that, uh, live in town, that we can really promote the events that that we're doing.
Yeah.
So, and all of our promotional material we'll have, whether it's an event at the harbor that we're working with, it will say Rockport Opera House and happenings on the harbor or whatever, so we're really pushing the Opera House out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or changes on Opera House?
Okay, uh, Recreation is next, page two sixty-three.
So, I know at the bottom, we talk about RES rental. And a couple of years ago, there was something there, where does the money go from the drive-in part? Where does that revenue get booked to?
They, we historically have only charged them for water and electric.
Charged them a rent.
I thought there was a rental fee included in that last contract. Or was it just an agreement that we just
Great thing for the
For the community, yeah.
Okay, I was thinking there was, was some revenue from that. And we don't charge fees for the use of the field, obviously.
Right, I mean, that's, and that's one thing that we need to probably get our hands around is, is use and, um, you know, rules, rules for use.
Right.
People should be paying more of their share of
Yeah, and, and I, and I, I had a great conversation with, um, one of the coaches from Bay Ruth, um, who had donated a lot of his own time from his business, was concerned about the charge and like, what are we trying to do and, um, well, it's Tom Hedstrom, you know?
Yeah.
Great, you know, electrician in town, and was concerned about where that was going and I, you know, I just said, I wanted you to explain yeah, all the thing, I, I'm not gonna belabor, because you all have heard me talk about a thousand times, but where we're going, and he was just like, I really appreciate you explaining that to me, because, you know, I think that a lot of these you know, community members or parents or coaches or what, they've been feeling like they've been out in the wilderness. And we have a committee and, and, and Jason's been great to really put their arms around that place and really give it the love it needed.
Yeah.
So, I think, um, did you get to go to the meeting yesterday, Eric? Yeah, I mean, I think
Well, I wa- I was listening, because I was working while listening.
That's alright.
And responding as asked.
Yeah, but there's some good stuff coming.
Oh yeah, there's some really good plans going on, but, you know, if we're charging, you know, well, not charging per se, but the leagues are do- doing donations to help support the use of the fields and they're going to be responsible for cleaning up after their games.
Right.
So that the town isn't burdened with that. With cleaning that up then, and if, uh, people are using the RES park, we need to be looking at something similar, you know, we can't just have people go in, use it and just leave, I mean, it needs to be maintained.
Right.
And if they're gonna use it, they need to help maintain it.
Absolutely.
Whether we have people volunteering to mow it, or they're paying a fee of ten dollars a kid, or
Some buy-in.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
You know, something, or the parents and the kids all get together and do a big fundraiser at the beginning of the season to and we do a big barbecue cookout there to raise three or four thousand dollars to help maintain the field.
It's no different than if your child plays hockey or the ice skate and you pay for ice time and you pay yeah, you have to, I mean, and that's, goes to the operating budget and that's, you know.
Like the harbor, I mean, we try to find revenue to offset the operation.
Right, absolutely.
The Opera House.
Yep.
You know, the places that, you know, we're not looking to make a killing, but it's nice to be closer to break even.
Pays, right, if it pays for the mowing.
Right.
If it pays for, right, I mean, those are the, those are the types of
Yeah.
Things that we need to encourage, and I, I appreciate Jason's efforts, because I know this is a, a start to something that hasn't been done, there's probably difficult conversations that had to occur when you start talking about you know, leagues paying fees that they haven't paid before, but
They were actually pretty, they were all open for that, actually, all of them were like, yeah, no problem.
Okay, nice.
And his donation roll-ins are really good.
Yeah, it lasted eighty-eight hundred dollars, I think, is what I
It's even more now.
Oh, nice.
It went up a lot in the last week.
Yeah, yeah, it's had a good week.
It's the organizational part of that too, where people can go on the site that he was talking and see what's available to, when.
Right, and schedule, and yes, agree.
Which has never been there.
Yep, agree.
One thing that is coming is probably, I wanna say new signage, but revised signage for out front. Uh, so look for that, um
Yeah, he's putting in new signs.
Many thanks to Penn Bay and, and the pitch for, for working with us on that, so
There was talk at one point about moving that gate in, so that people could park off the, off the road.
So I think, I, I don't, I don't know specific, but there's, there's a couple parking lot questions and I think the idea is to really tackle all of that at one time, the gate, the parking lots, parking lots, and really try to fix, fix that, um, and then, just, well, since we're down that road, um, originally, there was plans to build three eight-by-eight sheds, we'd buy the materials for roughly the same price, we can actually buy three sheds.
Three sheds.
They're gonna come in, level it, put it all out, ready to go, and, uh, we have a contractor all set up, once the road is, you know
Passable.
A little bit, little, little
It was looking a little, looking a little wet yesterday when I went by, yeah.
Not right yet, but soon enough, go in there and, and clean it up, and we should be able to do that, we're gonna have the paint ready. The three organizations will have to paint it up, and then ten years that will should be, those sheds should be ready to go, so that's, you know, some things aren't, don't work as well, but this is one I think we're getting progress.
And I really do, I don't know if Jason's on, but I, I really do appreciate Jason's efforts, because I know he took that on and he's been gangbusters going towards getting these, yeah, right, getting all these donations, so really appreciate his efforts, so
Yes.
All right, any other comments on, um, Recreation?
I have a really odd one, but I, this whole snowmobile reimbursement?
Do we even have a snowmobile?
What we do, let's run it out.
So there used to be a snowmobile club in town that we would collect the money from the state based on the ones that were registered, and then we would turn that money over to the club.
Huh.
But that club doesn't exist anymore, so the state sends us money and we just
Goose River Snowmobile.
Oh, Goose River Snowmobile, okay.
Since we haven't had any snow for
Right, okay.
To speak of.
All right, moving on.
Uh, Buildings and Grounds Administration, two seventy-one.
Such a blank slate.
So this is the new
Right.
Well, this is, I say new, but it's taking someone, putting them into a different position and pulling pulling money from other.
Right.
Uh, well, the supervisor is the same person in the same position, just not under Public Works. They were hired as a Buildings and Grounds person, and then it's adding the custodian position, which combines the Opera House custodian, the contracted services for custodial services across many budgets
Okay.
Are combined, were taken out and then this in its place.
What was the total for all of what we paid for that person to do?
It was
Our buildings, do you remember?
Uh, the, the custodian, the cu- the
Right, I mean, there, there was a woman that cleaned your office, the police department and wherever else state.
You have the slide.
Hold on a second, I'll tell you.
They had a slide pulled together.
Yeah, I can't remember the number, but
The, the total difference was twenty-three thousand dollars.
Twenty-three thousand, right?
Between what we had, what we, um, what we've put in here.
Well, I think it makes a lot of sense, in the sense that, as we were already talking about with Public Works, if that's gonna basically become the roads group there's so much more to this town than just roads.
Right, and that's the, you know, that was the idea, is to have a different focus, not to say you know, and, and this is where I'm trying to move us, is, it doesn't matter what department you're in we're in the town business.
Right.
You know, whether you're, you know, and I'd like this to get the, I mean, Andy Field is our, is our, uh, he works for, we're in current checking on, in, in our sanitation, but, you know, he, he, you know, he helps out, Randy helps out, and everybody, you know, everybody's part of this.
Right.
And trying to get that in the town office, trying to get that everywhere. You know, I fully expect, you know, I had a great chat with, with Glenn today and we were talking about actually a shed and trying to do a different shed outside the town office and you know, it's just, it's a different, it's a little bit of a different bent, but when there's help, when there's help needed, okay, we help, and then when there's help needed on the other side, okay, maybe we need Public Works to come over and lift something up, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think this is a good example, right, I know people can't see at home, but this built, this room that's been built, I mean, it's a good example of kind of people just using their skills and doing what needs to get done, and I think that
I mean, to have somebody come in and build it, it would've cost us easily twice as much.
Absolutely, right, absolutely, but we have
Until next
Right, but we have someone with the skills and that's what we're, you know.
So, so this is where I'm going, I mean, we, we've got a, a steep hill and we've got a lot of money we wanna spend in a lot of different places, this to me would have been one of those that you could have taken your, your forty-one-six person and added them next year. You know, just to make this year's mountain a little less. You know, you're still getting somebody that's gonna be out there doing it, yes, he's gonna have to do a little bit more, because he's not the supervisor only, you know, but you know, do I think it would be more efficient? You know, the, the idea with your contractual person, I mean, what's been the problem with the contractual, have they not done the work satisfactorily, or because if that's the case, then somebody hasn't been after them enough to, I mean, where are we with that, why? Why do we want to hire
Yeah.
Another full-time employee?
Yeah.
With all the things that go along with that, when we can sub it out for half the cost?
I, I think it's a, it's a situation of getting what you pay for. Um, you know, I think that a, a contractor can absolutely do a specific job, I think that's you know, you can very much, I'm hiring someone to, to, to build those widgets and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that, and then I'm gonna go home.
Have they not, have they not been cleaning the place adequately?
I think that there are definitely buildings that have, you know, folks who are responsible for individual buildings who have said, you know, yeah, this isn't been handled well, or, and, and those issues have definitely cropped up to me, but this isn't why I'm bringing this up.
No, but that's along the same lines with the EMS problem we had, where nobody talks and says anything. And here we are wanting to build our own whatever.
Right, right.
So, I mean, if there's more of a communications between the department head and you with whatever problems there might be here or there, then you could address them with the contractor.
Oh, sure.
And we can get them done, and I, I'm just, I mean, it isn't much, but it's twenty-three thousand that
Yeah.
You know, we could put off for an additional year.
Well, and that was why I said that if you were looking at some percentages below seven-nine, that to look to other areas rather than this, because first of all, I think it's a, it's a two-person situation, you know, uh, when you're mowing, someone's weed whacking, when you're snow blowing, someone's in the truck, you're, there's, it's a, it's a
When you're on a ladder, somebody's there with you.
Right, it's, it, it can be very much a two-person scenario, uh, and to have one person, one vision that touches all departments is something that this town, I think, does need, from a Buildings and Grounds perspective.
So the department head?
The, department head, but also, but that person, but also having that person who, who is you know, clean, you know, down here at the harbor, up here, over at the public, you know, public, uh, safety building cleaning everywhere, because that, you know, the, the total of that day, every, every day, every, uh, you know, every day, certainly in the winter, cleaning the floors over here at the library, every, every, uh, morning, cleaning the, the bathrooms. There's a, there is a, a multitude of that, in addition we have a, a mowing contract that excluded a number of town buildings that we just somehow expected Public Works to take care of. That was, basically ended up having a situation where
I don't think it was excluded, I think we bought a mower so that they could do it.
Well, but we didn't have staff to do it, and we were already shorthanded, so we ended up basically take, putting the person who built this and put them on a mower all summer, that's not an efficient use of
I know, I know, I get that, but we didn't buy the, I, I mean, we bought the mower with the idea that they could do it.
Oh, yeah, no.
But, and I understand we were shorthanded, so it's not like we didn't plan for it in the contract, because we did.
Well, we, we planned, I think, again, I wasn't here, but, but my impression kind of coming in in July was we, thank goodness, we had a new contractor to take o- take care of the lo- the, all of the cemeteries and, and a number of the parks, thank goodness. But the problem was that we had one day where we had effectively two people taking care of the RES facility, and we didn't really plan in terms of the labor side of how to, we had the machine, but we didn't have the labor to run it, and so, instead of coming in and, and helping and, and fixing those, that toilet that, that still runs, or fixing the, the, uh, the leaky faucet, or putting the striping around my door for, for privacy, so people can't hear, that's still not up there. That's not an issue of not communication, it's a question of time and, and, and mission, I think. And I think that's what I'm really talking about, is we need to change the mission of, of where we're devoting that money. I, I love the fact we have a contractor, and I, I agree that that should have been communicated earlier and better. Um, but I think also we have a situation in this building with Richard where he's going, he is retiring, we'll have to replace that, um, and I think finding a way to two birds with one stone solve it makes a lot of sense for us at this time.
And, and using the term custodian, do, are you envisioning other things besides just cleaning?
Yeah, I think they're, I think it's a broad, it's a broad
It's maintenance, right?
It's maintenance.
The assistant to the Buildings and Grounds Supervisor.
I wasn't feeling very creative that day, to be honest.
That's all, I, I just wanna clarify, I think it's bigger than that, and I think, you know, Glenn is
Very talented.
He's very talented, and he sort of got lost at Public Works, and we did not take advantage of someone like that, and I love the idea of giving him this department, because I think there are a lot of
And, and, I mean, don't
Things that will happen.
I mean, don't take it the wrong way, but I mean, at, at a time when we've, we've had two miserable years, we've got another miserable year coming up. People are definitely gonna be knocking on doors
I hope so.
With regards to what's being proposed.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, we, we've made significant I feel increases to the employees' wages by considering the six percent, plus the bump up in in the
Insurance.
Care. And I just can't, I'm thinking to myself, Jesus, you know, we're growing things you know, I'll get back to Blaine Richardson comment, but, uh, and I, you know, I say that in jest, but I mean like I said, we're growing a, much more quickly
Yeah.
when everybody else is going, oh, hang on a minute, Christ, now I gotta really look at how I'm gonna spend my money in the upcoming year.
Yeah.
And, and yes, I know that ours is only two hundred and two or to two hundred and twenty dollars or
Of that
And, and yes, I know that ours is only two hundred and two or two hundred and twenty dollars or of that monthly. But it's not just us. It, it's what they have to pay.
But if we're losing personnel, I mean, I don't know what the plan at Public Works is in terms of retirements that are coming along. If this department is sort of successful, where it does take a piece of the work that has been distracting Public Works from its work, I could see it, you know, being a, a, a way of saving
But that, but yes, I mean, they.
The right people for the right work.
They have gone from eleven people down to ten and one of these two people is that other person, but we're looking to hire another person beyond that.
Yeah, I don't know what the plan, I mean, for, you're saying the custodian.
Right, this.
Right, so.
Right, no, I appreciate that.
We're losing one from the highway, he's gonna be designated specifically for the supervisory portion of the program, per se. So, yes, we're technically still at eleven for the highway or in total, but we're adding that other position on for the forty-one-six, which, you know, I just, do I think it would be better handled? Probably, but I'm just saying, can that be put off another year?
Yeah.
I mean, it's only a twenty-three thousand dollar savings, but it's another year.
But everyone who comes and rents the Opera House when this place is clean and spick and span, it really, I just have to say, when I've been in here, it, it wasn't always that clean. Um, and it, it just sort of speaks, I guess, we can all, I mean, I guess I'm a fan of doing it this way because I feel like there's been cultural issues, it's been difficult to try to cover things that need to be covered by the town by relying solely on Public Works. So, to sort of get some of this stuff over here into a different category, um, I think in the long run is gonna mean, maybe we, you know, I, I'm not in charge of Public Works. I don't know what it's gonna take to keep our drainage and all the heavy equipment work.
So, this.
Gives us an opportunity to create sort of an area that we've needed for a while.
So, this custodial person, is that also shared with the library?
Yeah, Davey's going over there as well.
Is that something that is considered perhaps in their fifty-fifty split or however they do it?
Uh, 'cause the town pays all the wages for the library.
And the town paid for the cleaning, the library doesn't reimburse.
I mean, listen, it's, it's twenty-three thou- it's, at the end of, at the bottom line is twenty-three thousand more that we'll have to spend. And I know we're all trying to cut where we can, but I think there is something that comes with consistency and something that comes with having one, two people, whatever, accountable versus a, a janitor or vendor that does it here versus someone else who might be doing the town office versus whatever. I mean, there's a certain level of consistency, there's a certain level of expectation when you rent a facility that is clean. When I go into the bathrooms here, there's a certain level of expectation that, that one expects. And I think that it's not always easy to get that with a contractor. I mean, listen, they're doing multiple things, they've got, you know, they have a certain allotted amount of time, whereas if we have someone in, that, that we're in charge of, we, we dictate that, we send them to.
So, not to be the, you know, the, but didn't we just talk not long ago about the condition of the kitchen out here? And who was taking care of that?
Not the person we're gonna hire.
Yeah.
I know. No, and I, and, and, and we all know that there's things that, you know, go above and beyond that, like, we talked about carpet cleaning is, is something else that needs to be dealt with and, and, and floors and making sure, um, they're, they're, the maintenance of those, I'm not talking about installation of new floors, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about cleaning and maintenance. Uh, those things, that needs to be part of our plan. We need to have a plan for buildings. I didn't put anything, apart from the forty-five thousand we'll talk about in, in town office, I really didn't talk about those issues. And, and as we sat around in here in November, as the apartment heads sat around talking about that visiting process we did last fall, the issue of overcrowding and where you're going and what you're doing, in the long run, in saying, does it make sense to do all these little additions or does it make sense to do one larger thing? That's a big topic, that's not really in here.
Right.
What I'm really about is just trying to maintain status quo, uh, keep them up the best we possibly can. But there is a bigger building question, this build, all the buildings that we have to talk about, um, but this is really just maintaining where we are, you know, and, and trying to make it look presentable and reflective of the type of town it should be. You know, I want someone I can easily pick up the phone when I get a phone call or I get a text or someone says, hey, there's a piece of garbage, you know, garbage can't.
Right.
I wanna have somebody who I'm not pulling off a job site, but I'm pulling off of, hey, after you're done cleaning the library, can you go over and get that? There's a wreath over by, um, well, Hoboken, but that dying wreath that's hanging there, I've driven by it and I'm like, it's gotta get done, you know, and, and so we gotta move the, you know, the greenery.
Those things, you know.
Things need to happen.
When, when your executive assistant needs to leave her desk to go water plants outside.
Yeah.
Or, you know, those types of things. I mean, that's what we need, granted, everyone needs to pitch in, I get it. And I get it, Mark, I completely believe me. It's, it's hard for me to say, yes, it's okay to spend twenty-three thousand dollars in the position that we're in, but I do think, i- unless we focus our efforts appropriately, you know, to your point, there's a mattress on the side of the road, I can't pull someone off a heavy equip- piece of equipment to go pick it up. Either that or it sits there for a week. And then you have how many calls of people saying, do you know there's a mattress on the side of the road? So, just Mark, well, he does, he does his rounds every day.
But you're right. And, and, and anyone calls, you're right, those are things that give you pride in your town. And those are things, I mean, it happens, you know, it, we all, but is it there a day? Is it there two days? Is it there a week?
Right. It's the perception, right? It's the perception that, that we aren't, that people aren't doing their job, and that's not the case.
Right.
The case is they don't have the man, haven't, haven't had the manpower or someone hasn't been devoted to that. They've been, they've had other priorities. And then therefore, it does sit. And it's like, well, I called about that three weeks ago and it's still up. You've looked at that wreath how many times and, and come through, you know, it's like, I looked at, I don't know if they're still on the bridge, but a couple of weeks ago I looked at the wreaths on the bridge and I was like, those gotta come down, you know? Could I have pulled over and pulled them off? Probably, but I mean, those are the type of things where it, it, I think it would be beneficial to say, great, here, this is, this is your list of priorities. Let me log, let me log this ticket for you today.
Right, right, right.
Putting flags up and taking them down.
Oh, speaking of which.
Yeah.
I happen to have a conversation with the fire chief in Camden about the fire truck to put the rope up on the, uh, flagpole. He said, all I've gotta do is be asked.
Yes.
So, I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, you know, I, I, that, that, but that's a great, that's a great point of why this has come to be. Because is it Public Works? Is it library? Is it, I don't care who it is, I just wanna get it done.
And it should not be your job.
But it's part of that, it's part of that ethic that goes back to Steve and doing everything and God bless him and, and trying to make sure it was great, but we can't, Rockport twenty-twenty-two, we need somebody, we pick up the phone and that's the person who handles it, you know, and that's, that was kind of my feeling going into this is.
And better yet, someone who, when they're driving around is like, oh.
Let me do it, alright, let me just.
It could be done.
Let me, right.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I know, it's, it's tough, it's a tough position. I mean, my note was how critical, what happens if we, you know, what, how critical and what doesn't happen if we can't do it, but I, I personally, I'm.
Well, I'm gonna throw this back at Mark is, you know, you're always saying we gotta use what we have and keep it new without always having to, you know, clean and usable without always buying the shiny and new. Is that gonna help us not have to always buy the shiny and new?
I hope.
Is it worth it in that regard?
Well, I mean, everybody else along the way prior to us.
Yeah.
Has said, oh, no, let's, you know, they've overlooked all these things and they've gotten shiny new things.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And they've never taken care of them.
We're left with the tarnished silver.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if, if, if that.
We're trying to polish his pit.
If this position could do, do that.
Well, you know, part of the problem.
And it's worth it. If it, if it fails and doesn't do that, then it was, then it doesn't work.
Part of that problem is, here we are, we're adding that to John's plate, 'cause he's the one that said he's gonna monitor what he does. I mean, is that what we?
Doesn't, doesn't sound like this person needs that much monitoring.
No, but somebody has to give him a list of things to do, and I think that's what you said the other night. I will give him the list of things to do.
Well, he won't be a department head, but he'll be a pseudo-department head, is that how that would work?
So, you know, there's, there's some self-direction that comes with that and trying to create your own list, go through the buildings, make sure, you know, what needs to be done, create a regular maintenance plan.
To monitor that.
Well, if you have the right person in that position, they're self-motivated.
We have the right people in all our positions.
We do. I think we have the right person.
But left, left to our own demises sometimes.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just.
That work order system will help too.
Yes.
True.
That's been a problem. The inability of calling, where does the, you know, the complaint about this thing not getting followed up on? Uh, that, and I'm not, I'm not trying to point fingers, I'm just saying, that's the way it's been. Who do you call? I mean, that, to, to Chief Farley's point, you know, I, I, you're right. If Chief Peaslee called Chief Farley, he'd be over there that afternoon, you know, but, you know, should our fire chief be fixing our flagpole in Memorial Park slash Village Green, depending upon how old you are? I don't know, I don't think so. Why is he, why is Chief Peaslee helping out? You know, flagpoles at the harbor, well, get the ladder truck. There's just, there's a, there's a piece of this that has to mold. I'll, I'll tell you, part of this is, we had a conversation at a department head meeting this fall and everyone had thoughts about cleaning and who does this and who does that. And it's like, when's the last time that conversation's happened in this group? I don't know if it's.
Never.
It, yeah, and everyone had thoughts and it was great, but there was nobody really to blend that conversation together to say, okay, this is how we're gonna solve it.
Because ultimately, it's no one pers- it hasn't been one person's responsibility.
That's been, and, 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 you know, and.
It usually doesn't.
Public Works had some of that responsibility in the past, you know, but is that the best place for it? And I guess, I have been hot over this, in fact, this was probably the last thing. I, it took convincing for me to put this in because I'm like, I don't know, but the fact it was, it was twenty-three thousand and not sixty-five thousand was the difference for me. If it was such a differential, I would not have supported this and putting this in. So, that was where I, how I, where I came across. I, I, I hear what you're saying, I was beating those things around in my brain as well.
So, I guess the last little question on that, this person is no longer a member of the highway department?
Right, they'd be in a different, different department.
So, they would no longer be a member of the union?
Yeah, they, he's, currently he's not in the union.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, I'm just.
So, it's separate, I know. Well, that was, that was kind of going back to Megan. Originally, this was supposed to be its own position and not necessarily part of the highway.
When we hired him.
Conversation.
Cause it's not a defined position in the union contract to begin with.
And, and knowing this individual, I think he's happy with.
Well, no, I was just wondering whether, if you were pulling someone from the highway and sort of reallocating that highway specifically to something else.
No, it's not a union situation.
I mean, I'm still, I mean, I, I get it, we need to have stuff looking good, but we're also at the very least looking at a seven-point-one percent increase.
There you go. It's a lot.
It is a lot, it absolutely is. Alright, uh, any other comments before we move on? Alright, Megan.
Town Office two seventy-seven.
Is the mowing and grounds, is that part of the contract too? That, overall? Uh, sorry, thirty-six thirty?
Uh, that's, uh, Guinea Ridge, I think, in part. And then the, yeah, Farley does the cleanup of the, um,
Weird hedge things.
Yeah, I don't know what to call them, but the, you know, there's like that, uh, half circle around the brickwork. And they, they, they weed that.
Oh, where the daylilies are?
Yeah, and then they like re-bark mulch everything.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
So, it's not really mowing, it's more ground maintenance.
Ground maintenance, yeah, yeah.
Have any other comments?
Who was it that asked for tablets for the select board?
I don't know. How dare they? I did have a great chat with, with Jeff after our meeting the other night and some ideas and how we can, uh, to start that ball rolling. The trick isn't to have the tap, the idea basically is to get away from.
Yeah.
These books, yeah.
Yep.
Which cuts down on your printing expense.
Exactly.
And the time.
I don't, I, I don't know, I don't know what Diane will do if she doesn't have to put these books together every month, but, um, cut down the printing, you know, costs.
Yeah.
Give you something that's a little more electronic. What he and I were talking about is trying to avoid the situation where you guys, all of you have to read what's up here and squint and.
Yeah.
So, how do we, so the software piece of that is still something he and I are talking about, but, um.
I mean, it's certainly, it, it's a town piece of equipment. There's no risk of any of us using our equipment and having it infect something inadvertently.
Vulnerabilities, yep.
And, and there's no, if somebody wants a freedom of information request, it's, all you've got on there is your stuff. There's no, no personal emails, there's no.
Right. It's not about, and, and, in this day and age, it definitely is not a bad idea. I mean, I know it's an expense, but, you know, to your point, you've got your, your select board email, you've got your town documents, there's no.
Every June, when the new person gets elected, you all take them in, you drop them off at your desk, they get updated by whoever's doing it, they get reissued. Where you go for the next year.
Exactly, simple.
Alright, any questions on any of these items?
Is, is all of your forty-five thousand for your seventy-two oh five gonna be spent? At your building improvement reserve?
Oh, yeah, well, that's.
I know those listed items.
That's, that's the partitioning in the, in the Richardson room.
Richardson room.
That's creating those offices. So, that would be the first major project of the last department we just talked about.
Great.
Who, so who, who are you gonna put in there, I guess is what my, how, how, what are you gonna do? Cause everybody pretty much now has an office except for the two people that are out floating in the hallways.
Right. And that's, that's a big part of the problem. So, the, let me, the start, to start at the start, the, the administrative assistant effectively would move to where Scott is now, the CEO's office. Cut a hole in the window and they would be reception for the office. All phone calls, all visitors who are not going to the clerk's office would go there first. So, if someone was meeting with me or with Megan or whomever, phone calls coming in, that person would be responsible there. So, there's some modification that would be needed, need to happen in the lobby, minor, but, but, but it would try to broaden that office a little bit. Then, just as it was, you know, a, a minute ago, the rest of that space where those two offices or where those, those two desks are that really has never worked since we put desks in there, apart from having one person there, is to really make that kind of the planning suite. So, you'd have your maps, your, your permits, your, um, you know, all of the paper, your, your site plans, all in that central area. Then you have two offices where currently where the assessor office is, move Scott in there or CEO. Then you move, you keep, you keep Orion right where he is. Kick her out right away, right away, cause she's not.
Take her six months to move all her stuff.
She's not in code enforcement or planning, but really to keep playing, planning focus there and to have assessing and finance in the Richardson room, have their own suite, because they share one, one, uh, one, uh, admin assistant. And, um, you know, and there's a lot of kind of interplay. Our office, I mean, you've been in there, all of you have been in, is, is packed, chocolate block full. It worked when Judy was there twenty years ago, but there's a lot of paper that's accumulated over time. It's not because she's, you know, a hoarder or anything, but it's just there. So, so, so try to, 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 to reconfigure that situation, um, in there. So.
And does the assessor, who goes into Megan's office?
The assessor would also go in there. So, right now, that space, my thought would be a space where this, this, um, um, over, you know, this supervisor of buildings and grounds could work out of what's presently Megan's office. And so, you'd have that kind of direct opportunity, um, in there. So, it's, it's a big space, but, I mean, you know that big map table in a Richardson room, that will. That will take up a great amount, basically the entirety of where Molly's desk is. And then you'd move everything else in finance.
I mean, you know, I mean, I'm trying to follow what you're saying, but.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it make sense just to leave the assessing office where it is instead of moving it from there? Over to where Megan is and then moving Scott into where the assessing off. Why not just move Scott from where he is over to Megan's? And that way you don't have to move two people. You're just moving one.
You could. And the only, I mean, the only thing that my thought was, I mean, at that point in this budget, we have two people working out of that office. Not saying you just set apart to have two different workspaces, but. You have two people working in that current assessor's office right now, which is, um. That does look like a hoarding situation. It's there on top of each other in that space and it's, it's really not great. So. Maybe it'd be a bit, a bit of a broader, um, office space when you set that up, but. That's not really the purpose of it. I think the purpose of it really is to kind of focus on the planning side of things. So you're right, you could move. You know.
One person instead of two.
Right, you could do that, but I guess my thought was having somebody, having the assistant somewhere near. You know, our next door, literally to, to where your CEO is and your planner, but they're pretty close. It's not.
I mean, we only got him at twenty hours a week anyway, so.
There's a whole bunch of, yeah, options there, but, but I, I hear you. Nothing's finalized about that, but. I guess the point is we have more people than spaces and that's what really what we're talking about in this budget is. We gotta create spaces for those people and unfortunately that's gonna bump out. When we do our, our department head meetings, where we have committee meetings, where we vote. And that's a big, that's a big thing, but I, I really, that's where we are. That's where we are. Um, I wish the building was built bigger in nineteen ninety-eight and we wouldn't be here, but. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions on Town Office? All right, move along.
Public Safety two eighty-three.
I didn't have any comments on this. I don't know if anyone else did.
Nope.
Anyone else?
What, uh, you're building repair and maintenance. What are you doing? Thirty-six oh six.
Increase, oh, oh.
So two eighty-three, right? Am I on the right page?
Yep, two eighty-three.
Fifty-two fifty.
The windows? Oh, yeah. So we had an issue with the window in the, uh, with a window, a single window in. One of the doors moving up. Uh, come to find out there's dry rot in all of the doors. So, um, we're gaining a price on replacing all three door, or, yeah, all, all the doors.
And that's, uh.
How long, do you, how, how, when the last time that was done, Mark?
Well, I'm just gonna go back, cause it seems to me we talked about that same building repair and maintenance and the fire. You're talking about the, the police fire building?
We're, well, we were talking about, well, the, uh, there is a side door that, that we talked about.
Yeah.
Has to be replaced. Right, but, but the, what I'm talking about is the front, the gar, the garage doors, the, the front doors.
Oh, not that, not that long ago. I mean, those are new, those are new panel doors.
Was it done when we did the, the addition, like oh six? Does that sound right?
Uh, I wouldn't say they were any, somewhere between fifteen years maybe, twenty years.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it seems to me it was done when.
I wondered if it was then, right around the, the addition, when they put that on.
I don't remember.
Okay. I mean, literally this was, I don't know, was it Tuesday?
Actually, no, they, they were done while Bruce was there, I think.
Okay, so ten years at least.
And, and that made a, a dramatic improvement on the, the draft and everything that came around the, the old ones.
Yeah.
Well, we had a window completely fall out of the door and then they inspected all of the windows and it's been determined that they are all. Dry rotted and all need to be replaced.
Great.
I, but I thought they, you're talking about the doors that go up and down.
Yeah, the garage doors.
Well, I thought they, I didn't think they were wooden. I thought they were a, uh.
I think it's the seals all around.
Metal.
Thing. Yeah. I'll show you, I, I got, I got, he sent me some photos.
You'll go look tomorrow anyway.
The latest.
You'll do your inspection tomorrow.
Sorry.
Do your drive around, do your inspection. Any, um, any other, that's right. Any other questions on public safety building?
Oh, yeah, I got one.
Okay.
Five-three-three-zero operational supplies. I'm sure there's an explanation, but it jumped up quite a big percentage point.
So we are, uh, we had to replace all of the light bulbs. Um, and we're, to swap out for LEDs. So, um, that, that's part of that, that.
And that's also the side door replacement, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's the one I thought was in the.
Replace the PD side door.
Although, wow.
And frame.
I'll talk to that later. Yeah. We get, there's some, I don't know, there's some, but the timing of that may be changing, but I still hope it's done this spring, so. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, uh, West Rockport's next, two eighty-nine. Okay, West Rockport Fire Station. Two eighty-nine. This is primarily driven by the engineering, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
New station.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
All right, any questions for West Rockport Fire Station?
Next is debt page three oh three.
Okay. Questions for debt? I did not have any.
Get a zero interest credit card and just put it all on that.
There you go.
And then we did get miles for that?
Let's, yeah, let's do that.
No balance transfer fees.
Yeah.
Next is County three thirteen.
Can I tell them no?
Yes, no, I'm not gonna pay these fees.
Not unless you use some of your ARP money for economic development in the county.
Grumble, grumble.
Oh, my God.
All right, any questions for county fees?
Next is Cemeteries three twenty-one.
Well, I do like the idea of digging that reserve to help on this.
Yes, I do too. I think that that's a wise move.
That mowing number just jumps out.
The mowing number, yes, it absolutely does.
Yeah.
That, that, uh, clover's looking better and better on the side.
It is March, St. Patrick's Day, you know, just.
Any other, um, questions for cemetery?
What, what are the general supplies? Fifty-four fifteen.
Those are the flags?
Yes.
Yeah.
Clover's softer than grass too.
There we go. All right, any, any other questions or recommendations for cemetery?
Did you want to increase the investment or do you wanna go back to that later when you figure out where you wanna?
Put it at fifty.
I think we should put it at fifty personally.
Mm-hmm.
Mark, do you feel?
Which, which lines that again, sorry? The twelve oh six at the bottom.
Yeah, twelve oh six.
No, twelve hundred.
Oh, sorry.
Twelve hundred.
Oh, se- cemetery trust fund.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I do think we should use those reserves.
One or the other. I had an arrow up on that one too already.
There you go.
All right, uh, next is Schools three thirty-one.
I understand in, in the Zoom going on right now, they cut everything. No, I'm just kidding.
Cut it in half.
Yeah, but if you do have, if you do watch and have questions, let me know, cause I told Maria I would send whatever we had and.
Sure.
Send her her way, so.
Yeah, sorry we couldn't attend that. I would have liked.
And these numbers that are in here are as close as we know without any adjustments.
This is what they posted on their website as their numbers, so.
And I, and I would say, usually I'm hesitant to talk about how, um. How the whole thing fits this early on, but the fact that these numbers are that close to the end, you can actually get a sense of your. Share of how much is each, so you can actually talk mill rate, but usually you can't do that this early, so it's very nice from their part.
Okay.
So last one on the list is Special Assessments, page three thirty-five. Can remind, remind me what this is?
SAMAC.
Billing.
Oh, billing, yes, okay.
And our revenues, which are, you know, revenue sharing and.
Okay, thank you.
UFB. So is this, is, this would be the place to make changes to UFB if you needed to.
I do have a question on why does SAMAC do it this way and not bill the tax percentage in their, in their HOA fees? Like every other timeshare?
Basically, their system does not allow for that. So the compromise was that we would just charge them for doing it?
I think they would just upgrade their system.
Ocean Properties doesn't like to upgrade. I, I would also say that this is, I, I'm hopeful, um, Lynn and I have talked about this, um, and I, I'd like to see that. A lot of our billing issues, because they're such small, small tax amounts.
Yeah.
If we can try to move towards an online option. That, all these Canadian, you know, it's very difficult, the cost of them, the postage, to send it in and.
Right, yeah.
All that, it's a, it's a complete disaster, so. The ability, if we can get an online component and you just use a credit card and you know it does the tr, it does the tr, that, um.
Yep.
You know, it changes the exchange rate automatically. Would, I think, help clear up a lot of our issues with timeshare billing, so. Something I'm hoping we can work on here in the next.
And do you always, do we always collect those a hundred percent?
We have some that go, we have one, some that have gone to lean and, and, and are in foreclosure.
And SAMAC just.
There's always a list in the newspaper of all the SAMAC timeshares.
Oh, yeah, I know, but I didn't know if they were from, being forced from property liens or what, yeah.
But for fourteen dollars, it's like.
Yes.
I don't, yeah, it doesn't make any sense to go through this process because then we're stuck with the collection portion.
It's crazy.
That's why we moved to this model of, it took a lot of conversations to get to a point where. They were either comfortable taking it on or paying us to take it on, so. We looked at what our actual costs were in terms of mailing, staff time, maintenance of the record cards that we have. And this was the price that we came up with.
So. Before we talk UFB or UAB. Where are we, yeah, where are we now? I mean, we started at nine one six.
Well, I haven't added the fuel stuff back in, cause me really haven't officially made that decision to do that.
Well, I mean, I think it's prudent to.
I think we have to.
Air on the side of caution.
Yeah.
Right now, it's at eight point four.
That's adding that back in?
No, I haven't added that back in, so if you give me a few minutes, I can do that.
I think we're right back where we started from.
Yep. Do you wanna take a recess?
I wanna take just a few minutes break, stretch break. And then we'll come back and.
Why don't we have anything in the homestead exemption reimbursement for the?
Because it's not determined until time of commitment, so it comes off the commitment. But we can't budget for it because we don't know what it is until commitment's done.
So does that impact the budget then for real or not?
Well, I, when we did the mill rate calculations, I accounted for it, a portion of it.
Okay.
So it's included in those estimates.
Okay, I'm gonna take a quick break. Stretch break. Facility break.
Alright, thank you, welcome back. So adding the heating fuel put us at eight point seven. Eight point seven, and that's not taking out any on a sign, okay. Eight point seven. And you haven't done anything with paving yet, that's still a six fifty.
Okay.
I mean, if.
If we.
Okay, that's still at six fifty.
Right. All the stuff on the slides, other than what we did in these last few.
So the cemetery reserve, is that back?
You guys did pay that to fifty. Yes, did you do that in your, you took yours to fifty, okay, okay.
If you wanna go to the slide just to see what.
Yeah, what we've missed if we needed to.
Just to give them a sense of where that sits.
That was a couple hours ago.
Yeah.
I know.
Seems like a lifetime ago.
Has it been that long?
I don't know.
Bruce, could you bring it up when she gets it?
Oh, I gotta share it, that's my fault.
Oh, she's gotta share it, not on you, Bruce. We're team here, getting it done.
Maybe.
Hi, John.
I'm getting there. There we go, oh crap, okay, there it is.
So, just to go over it again, seven point nine, to go from, what, we were at eight, what was it?
Eight seven.
Okay, eight seven, would mean putting paving back to seven eighty-eight, four fifty, use two seventy-five from USB, and increase cemetery, cemetery use to forty.
We went to fifty.
We said we. We already increased that to fifty. Okay.
So we've.
So Megan, does that still work with your numbers, putting the fifty in? So if we, if we're at the eight point seven right now, you put the fifty in. Do you want me to increase paving?
Yeah, do it like that slide.
Just do it like that slide, just for, um, comparison.
So, there's a little interlude here.
Please, take your eyes off me.
Little soft shoe, maybe.
With regard to the.
Seven point eight seven.
With regard to the ZBA that has to have their meeting now.
Yeah.
Why do we have to wait a month? Why can't we have a special meeting?
Oh, that was, yeah, that was just one of those situations where you put an application in, they're so long that it takes to set up the thing.
You know, if we get the notice that they've done their thing, then we just, yep, you gotta have a special meeting next week, get together and get it done.
We, we do have to get our, uh, our, everyone's attorneys, um, present, including the ZBA has their own attorney, has the town's attorney. But, but, no, I, I think there's a desire to, to move swiftly if we can. There also, we did receive a FOA, um, request from, um, the, uh, attorney representing, um, the friends and regarding the parking study, and so we're working on putting that together and getting that out the door as well, so, um, you know, that's, uh, that's all the latest news on that one, you know?
Alright, so Megan, back to this, you, you increased the paving back to seven eighty-eight, you added the fifty thousand for fuel, and you upped the cemetery. To fifty thousand, and added two hundred and seventy-five from the unassigned fund balance. Okay, so that's with two seventy-five added, and that takes this to seven point eight seven. Okay. What other comparisons would we like Megan to run?
About seven point eight seven percent.
Increase, right.
Right, yep.
Hold on, let me close, I'm out of the one second. So Mark, do you want us to run, have her update same scenario, but with a larger unassigned fund ballot?
Well, yes, I mean, I, and I, and I say this, um, realizing that we, we do need to do what we're doing.
Yep.
And we didn't give Jonathan any parameters, we just said, come back and tell us. No, I mean, in reality, I mean, you know.
That's true.
You know, in, in years past, I think it's all been sugar coated for the lack of a better thing, and we've gotten by with doing little bits and bits and bits, but all that does is kick everything down the road.
Right.
Um, and, and I don't expect, I don't expect next year for the, for the number to be as big as it is this year.
Right.
So when I, when I say this, I'm, I would structure the comment about UAB, um, you know, and don't fall over, but I would say use six hundred of it this year and use four hundred next year, and then wean yourself off it, back to two hundred the year after that. I mean, you, we've got to get things done, and I know it's a drastic amount of money.
Seems a, a lot.
No, no, listen, I'm just creating conversation.
I know, I know, and it's a good approach.
Yeah.
Um. I can say with almost certainty, if we use six hundred thousand on it, we will be looking at tax anticipation now.
Well, we're, that's only three hundred, I mean, you were gonna do three twelve anyway, is what you would, had originally proposed.
Could we just look at the number with four? I mean, I know it's more than your.
It was three eighty last year.
Three eighty, right, it's not. Seven ten.
Seven point one.
Yep, seven point one, with using four hundred thousand.
That's not, I was looking at the planning and community development, because one idea in there was to increase permit fees to sixty-five thousand.
Right. Right.
Is that?
Did we capture that?
You could do that, no, I, I, yeah, I.
Well, what is it now, fifty?
Fifty, yeah.
So let's capture it at sixty-five.
Is it too aggressive?
Yeah, I don't know, I was gonna say, what if we go split the middle and go five, seven, five?
Well, and are, is there some thought that we would increase those fees?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm pushing for increased fees because I want the people that are building the houses to pay.
Pay for it.
Our supply, our town's resources to, to build those houses.
So what is it in us now, right now, sorry?
Fifty, yeah. In a rhyme or a rhyme, that would be increased by a third, so that's, that's how I got fifteen on top of it.
Well, we can do, do sixty then.
Sixty?
Let's just see it at sixty.
Right. Thank goodness Megan's so flexible and smart with Excel.
I mean, I'm all, I'm all for people to, you know, building properties and things like that, but not at the expense of every other resident already here.
Right.
So what's that take us to? Seven point oh four. Seven point oh four.
So when you round that, that's seven?
Oh, what was, yeah, I'm just trying to get another fifty out of UAB.
Four hundred and fifty thousand?
I just, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I, it's just, it's gonna be, it's a hard pill.
Cause that's partly our cash flow cushion.
Yeah, I.
And that's part of the reason why we're in the predicament that we're in right now, I mean. Just on a sign fund balance, we started three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the hole. Does this one that you're recommending, I know one of the slides said about removing a position at the harbor, I think, does this one that you're on right now include that when you get to seven?
You minus ten thousand out of that, I think.
So then, no longer have the two people weed whacking, I mean, you had said that there's some efficiencies when you have two people.
Right, so that, so the idea with the Harbor Park attendance was really to have two, two people, and that way, it, in the same way we have event staff here available, we have event staff available there, you know, we met, uh, talked about some of the events we're talking, we're gonna have put on at the harbor, so we're hoping for later hours, we're hoping for not just, uh, eight to five, but a little bit more broad, um, in terms of how we're staffing that space in the summer, during the busy season.
Right, right, just those twelve weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a forty-three hundred dollar savings, so.
Right, it's, you know.
And that's reflected in, in this?
I don't know, that's what I was asking, so that's not reflected in the seven oh four.
Only what we ask.
Right, only what we asked her.
Well, let's, yeah, you know, let's add it in, I mean, I, you know, I'm sorry, but it's, it's gotta be, it's gotta be a little bit painful for everybody. I mean.
I wouldn't have put it on the slide if I didn't think.
If you didn't think you could do it, right.
Right, that's, that's where we, those were some of those ideas, you know?
And I appreciate that, cause I know this is not easy, believe me, I know that for you, for Megan, right, so I appreciate you looking at it that way.
Yeah. You know, and I just, I'll keep, keep going, I, just to talk about UFB for a second. The one thing that I, I, I do.
Get to six nine nine.
I, I, I know, I.
Grounding is the same.
I don't wanna get, I, I'll say it before you, you find something to get to six nine nine, but the one thing I would say is that it is, I, I liken it, and this is maybe, you know, poor taste or whatever, but it, it, it's, it's an addictive, it's like a drug, it's addictive.
Well, right.
It's one of those things where once you have it in your budget, it's very difficult to get it out.
Right.
And you, so even going to say that first slide to say, okay, we'll go two seventy-five, was a way of saying, look, it's what we have, but a little bit less, and, and then looking at what the impacts for seven nine, seven six, and seven three versus what the actual taxpayer will be paying out, was not that much differential between those three. So it was like, in terms of the town's fiscal health, how do we get us to a point where we're only using kind of the question that Mark asked? Once we get to that point where we have a sufficient number, whatever we decide that to be, twenty percent, twenty-five percent, you know, that's a policy decision for you, but once we eat, what's that?
Not twelve, we know that.
Right, not twelve, but whatever the policy is of the board, then we kinda go to the question Mark asked, Megan, which is, well, how much did we get turned back to us? Because then we're, then we're spending that forward, and that's the amount that comes in here, as opposed to we have to try to find a way to the number, so it's, it's a little bit, it kinda feeds itself in the same way.
I mean, I'd almost look at that and say, you know, for future reference, uh, whatever you get back, fifty percent of it is what you can use to, to build.
Well, if we do well, if we do, like, if we did well, even I wouldn't, if we get to that level, I, I'd say a hundred percent. You know what I mean? Like, use it, put it in reserves, you know, put it towards a building reserve, or put it towards, you know, that big project that we're gonna have, like, get it, keep it flat, you know?
The other part about that is if you're, if you're at seven percent now, and you're using five hundred.
Yeah.
And you've already said that next year's budget may not be such of a heavy lifting
Right.
budget as this one is.
Right.
So, you know.
Except for if you use that level of unassigned fund balance, it will be that heavy.
Well, next, next year, you, you wouldn't be using, yeah, in, instead of having the, trying to think of how to word it that makes sense to me. You know, you're, you're going, you're doing a lot of your heavy lifting and building by building up your infrastructure
Right.
to do things going forward, and yes, it is a big jump. But next year, the jump isn't going to be as big, cause you've already done that this year.
Right, you won't have your locators, you won't have your, I mean, have some maintenance, but, right.
And all the wage or the possible spending stuff.
The expenditures and all that you hope is level, but the worry, the worry I have, and I think what Megan's talking about, is the net number.
Right.
Because that revenue will then, we either have to meet the same number as we did last year, or if we don't meet that number next year, that deficit is what we're gonna either have to cut out of expenditures to keep the rate.
Or raise the taxes.
Or, right.
Go back up.
So that's, that's what I'm saying, is that the UFB thing becomes, it's, it becomes a situation, like, back in, back in the day, back when I sat up there, we had ninety thousand in the, in the budget, like, every single year. And we would go from ninety to a hundred, or we'd go down to eighty, but it was always the same amount every year. And it had been that way, I don't know if it was Pat Smalls' idea of how to get there, I'm not sure how we did it, but it was always the same, so really the budget impact wasn't imp- important, but we were always using some for that fund balance. And then what we did is we put the overages into reserves, so that way it kept our ca- our capital needs down. But we're not at that point right now, so I'm not, I'm not, you know, we've got a, this is to Mark's point, like, there's a, there's an expenditure issue, and if we talk about the things we've done here, that will solve the expenditure issue. What I worry about is the increase next year, and that's, that's the thing, I wanna make, I would rather have a seven point, whatever, two percent increase this year, and have a two or three percent increase next year, so I mean, you know, everything works the way we want it to, rather than seven, you know, six point nine, and then four point five.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, that's the, that's the thing where I'd like this to be a blip, and, and rather than having to wean off the, the UFB, until we get to a point where that policy, you all know what the policy is, so before we even go into the budget process, the four of you, five of you, you already know what the number's gonna be, and we just have to do the math to tell you what you have available to yourselves, you know? That would be my hope, you know, a year from now.
Was the tax club a way of trying to give us more flexibility on UFB at all?
No, it just helps cash flow.
Okay, and the UFB isn't.
Helps.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking that that is, helps for the cash flow.
I mean, how, but there aren't a lot of people in it.
Well, no, I, I get that, but I'm just, you know, if.
There might be more now.
If they feel like it matters.
If they don't have escrow accounts, I mean, typically the people that don't have escrow accounts are the ones that own the million dollar mansions.
John, uh, based on what you just said about it being a blip this year, instead of six and four the next year.
Yeah.
Given the inflationary pressures we're experiencing and are likely to experience for the rest of next year, that, I understand what you're trying to do, but
Yeah.
maybe a blip up to six and then down to four is a better way to go, just given everything else going on?
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear you, I hear you, John, I think, I think the concern I have is that in next year's budget, if we have inflationary pressures then, we're going, that would be the upward pressure, as opposed to being forced to deal with an increase related to a UFB, you know, having to fill the void with UFB, that's, that's what I'm kinda talking about, is that, that gap of trying to meet the four hundred thousand next year, like, we, we're kinda chasing it at that point, to always have to get to four hundred, otherwise we have a detrimental effect on our net, uh, tax commitment, so.
So, okay, oh, go ahead, Mark, sorry.
No, I just, I mean, that's why I was saying that, you know, I'd much rather add a position next year than to have this type of inflation go on through into next year, and then have to cut somebody.
Right.
You know?
Well, I mean, we are taking out a couple of things, we took out the attendant, what is this part-time?
Public works.
Public works.
Yeah, we'd increased part-time labor in public works to, um, to twenty, uh, to twenty-four thousand seven hundred, and that was one where. And that was one where, you know, I think with the, the maintenance person and the supervisor, perhaps we can fill some of that part-time need.
Okay.
Um, that's another way to get to that number.
Yeah.
We, we do need to increase, um, our part-time wage, because i- in, in public works.
Well, sure. Right.
And that's something that, when you look year over year, that it's a little bit lower than probably it should be, but, um, ten thousand, I think, should, should cover that in my mind.
So we could take fourteen five, or fourteen, fourteen out of that?
We could, yeah. Yeah.
Take out of that. And then there was something else about incluse, increase the float reserve?
Yeah, yeah.
To six, I think, wasn't it?
Six, yeah.
Throw, you, you gave us all these options, so we're gonna put them all in.
Yeah, no, you.
Yeah, yeah, they were.
I mean, a lot of it helps.
It might help us to bring that U F B down.
Whatever it takes, right.
Yeah.
I, I'm, trust me, I, I, you know, I, I don't wanna, I don't, a blip, I wanna, I, I wanna a less blip, if we can, you know?
Um, okay, well, I'm gonna throw out the most unwanted, just, uh, idea here that you're going to hate, but, um, I'm still kind of burned on this F S A idea. Not that it's a bad idea as a whole, but since we keep saying whatever it takes, and everybody's got a bite a little bit here and there, instead of twenty-seven five, why don't we do it at the twenty-two five level, and if the employees wanna buy in the extra five hundred this year, they can still do that, and it's a tax-deferred purchase, and then we're still building partially onto that fund, and then the following year we can do it, cause at five hundred dollars a person, times how many employees?
Thirty, round numbers.
Yeah.
That's, that's a significant number.
It's, I mean, it does add up, and it's not, I mean, we.
I mean, you know, I'm not throwing your idea away.
No.
I, I appreciate it.
I'm just giving options to say either we do it at half, or we do it at a por- a partial, I mean, why do we have to fund it a hundred percent? We're already bumping their health insurance from seventy-five, eighty-five to ninety.
Right.
Which is gonna, which means they've already got more money in their pocket, because they're not putting that money up.
Yeah.
So why are we fully funding the F S A?
Well.
I mean, I'm not.
Yeah.
Right, you're not, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying we shouldn't or can't, I'm just saying, if, if my health deduction suddenly drops from four hundred dollars a month to two hundred dollars a month, then I can, I personally can say, okay, well, I got two hundred dollars extra month in my pocket, you're putting in two thousand into an F S A, I can put that other seven hundred and fifty dollars in throughout the thing, and it, it's not negatively impacting their paycheck, and they're getting a six percent raise.
It, I, I, I think you're, you're on the right track, Eric. I, I think partly, I think a lot of this is about, it's about message. It's about what are the employees feeling like? Uh, do they feel like, you know, they're, they're heard, and they're respected, and, and we can retain and attract new ones?
Yeah.
And if, if, we have a couple positions here, and I'm saying, look, we've got a new thing, the board, you know, the board, and it's in the budget this year, and, and there's support for it, and it's gonna go this year, it's gonna be this, but, you know, there's support to, to expand, to, to go beyond that in the next budget.
Right, it's a start, right, it's a new, yeah.
Well, it also sends the message to somebody who's hiring, like, oh, these people are thinking about us. You know, like, that's a, that's a really powerful thing. Um, and so, I, I think that's, you know, I don't know what the, what the total number is of, you know, the reduction of fi- you know.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I mean, we could look at it in various levels, I don't, I just don't feel, I'm not comfortable funding it at a hundred percent.
True.
I, I understand, it's a great thing, we use it, and we burn it, uh, every year, fully.
I do too.
Yeah.
Right to the penny. And last year, even well over.
Yeah.
But, but.
Yeah.
How many employees do we have?
So reducing it to twenty-two fifty would save fourteen thousand five hundred dollars.
So.
I think it's a fair recommendation, I do.
And there's your twenty-three for your guy.
I do think, I mean.
Yeah, no, I, I, listen, a little here, a little there.
I, I do think it's a fair, it's a, it's a fair recommendation. It is a new program.
Yeah.
We will fund it. It's not funded a hundred percent, that's okay, it's a start.
And we'll see how it gets used.
And if they wanna put the other five hundred in, that's on them, and it's a tax-deferred.
They can do it.
It's tax, you know.
You know, it's a pre-tax number, so.
Right.
And if they're not paying as much in the health insurance premium, they have that money to do it, or they can say, I'm not gonna do it, I'm not gonna spend twenty-two hundred dollars in medical, then that's great.
Yeah.
I, I hope that they don't have to spend twenty-two hundred dollars in medical, because last year, the last couple years has been terrible.
Right, right.
And you know, I, I, I understand your, your thoughts about your employees, our employees, and that we want to keep them, that's great.
Right.
But when you're balancing thirty people against thirty-three hundred people, you know, you, it's, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and hopefully it's a strong message already with.
Well, I, I hope it is, I mean, it's a difficult one.
It's a six percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and the start of the F S A.
Right, you know, it's, and that's the, that's the main thing about this. It, it, it's about a start of conversation. You know, it's start of, it's the first budget I put together for, for these folks that are working for me. It's the first time that, you know, you've seen a budget, like you said, without any governor on it at all, and I appreciate you listening to that.
What are you taking away from this, anyway, for next year?
What's up?
It is not six, eight, but we still have the U F B and four hundred.
Yeah, so U F B, so we're at six, eight.
And that's U F B at four hundred?
And just for the sake of, like, getting to a number, I took it all out of the town manager, and I'll go through and adjust it.
Oh, oh, that's fine, that's fine.
I just.
You don't have to stay here and.
Yeah.
You have no budget.
Took it all out on me? Is that, that's what I took out of it?
That's right. So, um, right now, unassigned is at four. And Eric, what were you saying? Three fifty?
Well, I'd be happier at three, cause those are what we're putting in, but I'll look at three fifty.
Okay.
I, I just, I don't wanna keep borrowing into the future on, on the negative, because it is.
Yeah.
I mean, I work with a lot of clients that are, that run their businesses that way, and let me tell you, they don't look good.
Right, right. So that puts us just, that puts us at seven point one.
Three fifty.
Yep.
So, you know. Well, there you go.
And what is, what was inflation? Seven, seven nine?
Seven nine. It's for December. We have, they haven't, they haven't January number yet, but seven nine. But that accounts for fuel, too, so we're.
Right, that's the increase in fuel.
We're ahead of the game.
We're ahead of the game on fuel, I think.
Right.
You know, it's four, four fifty, depending upon what the, what the product is.
So, just for conversation purposes, when people ask, you know, we've had to increase the fuel line by fifty thousand, we've had to do things that would have allowed us to be down at five percent or whatever.
And we took fifty thousand on excise, just to be cautious.
Absolutely.
Right.
Right.
So.
Exactly, right. We haven't overstated, we haven't overstated our revenue, because we didn't want, you know, with excise.
People would register their vehicles.
We, we talked about excise, like, well, maybe we should, you know, and we're like, well, no, we'll just leave it, and just try to hope, you know?
Right, so anyone who's in town that has not registered your vehicle, that still has your out-of-state plate.
How many days? They got thirty days to do that?
Thirty days to do that?
Yeah, depends on who you talk to.
Um, all right, so what, how do we feel about the seven one? Keep in mind, we started this evening at twelve.
Nine, one, one.
Nine, one, plus your fifty thousand.
Well, right, nine, one, plus my fifty, right. Well, we started Monday, or two weeks ago, at twelve.
I don't know.
I think seven, one, like.
Two thousand and eighty.
Do we feel comfortable with?
I think in light of the level of inflation that we're, we're having to deal with.
Okay, at this point, and see what the budget committee's thoughts are.
Okay, do we vote? Do we just, at this point, give it all? I don't think so, right?
We get one shot after, after they get done.
Okay. So Megan will, so let's talk a little bit about next steps. So you'll, Megan said she'll obviously does all this, puts it all together, writes the memo, gets it to the budget committee.
Well, first, I'm gonna make your changes.
Yeah.
Uh, draft your comments. So I'll email those, email those to all five of you.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
So, the sooner you get those back to me, the sooner I can get the budget posted.
Okay.
Online, and get the link to the budget committee, along with a memo explaining the changes, and adding that employee stuff in there, and I'll adjust that based on the changes that you made.
So we were scheduled to have a meeting on Monday, which would have been our normal select board meeting, which we would have, I guess, if we couldn't have come to consensus tonight, we would have talked about that. My understanding is there's not a lot on that agenda for Monday.
No.
So would it make the most sense?
Can I ask a question about that? Cause on this schedule.
I have it, yeah.
Do you have, I haven't heard from you on that.
I think I have an answer for it, yeah.
Okay, good. It says proposed ordinances amendments must be in final draft form for that. And I had raised the question, cause the O R C thinks that it doesn't have to do anything until the planning board meeting uh, March twenty-fifth, so I just wasn't sure when ordinances have to be ready to get them on the.
Right.
Yeah, so a hundred, so the, the trick is sixty days. Sixty days is the number from which we have to have the questions ordered. The, the trick that we need to follow is the, the planning board needs to have review the O R C plan, you know, what changes that they have provided.
Mm-hmm.
And then that comes back to.
To the select board.
To the select board.
So their schedule is March twenty-fifth for their hearing on that.
And they're planning to, you know, they'll, to have that review. Now, my, I guess my question is, again, new, um, but i- is there traditionally a review of the language before the planning board gets it, and then it comes back to you again? Cause it seemed like there was a, one of these.
Yeah, it seems like this was set up that way, but I don't know.
Yeah. I, I don't think that needs to occur. I think the, the O R C process can go to the planning board and then come back.
And knowing what these changes are, I can't imagine anybody's gonna have any.
It's pretty, you know, I, I mean, I'm glad to provide a, a, what we have, if anyone wants to look at it, but I, my sense was really to make sure that, for your meeting in April, when you set your, your ballot questions, we, we're off from there.
Okay.
If that's still in the cards.
So that brings me back to my question. If we don't have a lot of burning topics for Monday, are we better served to review the stuff tomorrow that Megan sends, get it to the budget committee, they're gonna meet on the fifteenth, and that we would meet again on the twenty-first, and do our select board meeting and review of what comes back from the budget committee?
Yeah, that would be, you could do that.
And presumably, if anything had come up that we needed to act on.
Right.
We could do it at that meeting on the twenty-first.
On the twenty-first, I would think.
There, there will be a need for, uh, executive session at that meeting on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Which we would have had. It's to handle, um, a real estate matter.
Okay.
So, uh, it, it's not that time sensitive, so we can, we can wait on that.
Okay, so we can wait on that. Is everyone in agreement, or okay with that, if we don't meet on Monday? I mean, I know you'll miss us, but.
What will we do with our time?
I mean, we didn't get an increase, so we'll, uh.
I put it in, you know, I mean, you guys, you know, tough on yourselves.
That's right, okay. So we will not meet on Monday, we will review all the information that Megan gets us in a timely fashion, so we can get it back to her, so she can get it to the budget committee. They'll meet on the fifteenth, and then they will bring back their recommendations to us on the twenty-first. So Diane's got a little extra time for binder making.
Are you gonna get it done in one day?
I don't know. Do they get it done in one?
They only have one meeting scheduled.
Okay.
Super efficient.
Well, once you give them the changes we've made, it might go a little easier.
Yeah.
Yeah. If, if somebody were to ask, you know, down the road, you can say, we took fifty thousand out of revenue from the excise. We added fifty thousand over here because of, um, whatever, and we used fifty thousand less of the four hundred.
Of the unassigned, yeah.
So what would it be with those three things? Just so you could say to somebody, well, it could have been this, and, and.
We put the fit.
No, I'm just saying, if somebody asks, we, we can say, well, we made adjustments, some up, some down.
It would be a hundred, a hundred thousand more.
Right, so we probably would have been in the.
Been another, not much.
Hundred thousand is about.
Point three.
Uh, in terms of percentage, it's, so I think a hundred and seventy-seven thousand was the one percent.
Hey, so, speaking of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah.
Where is that gonna go? Not that we should close the.
We'll have to figure it out.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that that's, um.
Do we even know when they're issuing them, is guess is the question.
It was supposed to be in the spring.
Right.
Supposed to.
Um, you know, um.
I, listen, I'm just looking for another dime to offset what we've got here.
Right, I agree.
Yeah. But we have to look at what they expanded. I'm, I've read them a couple of times, but the usage is still limited, but it's expanded.
Expanded from the original.
I mean, certainly there are, there are infrastructure needs that could be applied, that could be applied to. Um, broadband, um, even though we, first half, that could be applied to, um, but, um,